Okay. Gentlemen, you ready? Okay. Good evening, people. I called to order the Thursday, August 13th, 2020 school committee meeting. Today's evening of events is the presentation and discussion of school reopening plans. And I look at it this way, that tonight's meeting is basically for us to actively listen to the plans, to develop our questions. Anyone that has questions can do one of two things. They can email them to this office so that we can answer them ahead of time, some of the duplicates and whatnot. Or we can save them for Monday for the public hearing that will be at 6:30. So I believe on to number two, which will be the presentation and discussion of school reopening planning. Dr. Hackett, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I could speak.
By all means, Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things in regards to the safety, health, and education for our students. We have received data, up-to-date data. And currently, Braintree is in the green, as indicated by the governor. We have had a total of six cases in the last 14 days. We have a percentage of 0.8% of positive cases in the last 14 days. And we are at 1.1 for the average daily cases per 100,000 population. So in continuing with that thought, the governor was quoted as saying, if you are in, there's other color zones. The white zone is the communities with less infections and that are have even less issues with COVID. But as designated, and this is a quote from the governor, it says, "If you are in a green or a white community, I can't imagine a good reason not to go back, whether it's full-time or in some sort of a hybrid, because for all intents and purposes, you meet all the benchmarks that are being used across the country." And that was a quote from Governor Baker on Tuesday, who I think has been extremely conservative and practical about the approach of opening in phases, et cetera. And I would just say that the original plan that was going to be presented, and it will be presented tonight, I was looking at all this data and feel it's important for us to get every one of our students, give every one of our students the opportunity to go into a classroom. So that would be K, pre-K through 12. I believe that we should utilize all the buildings that we have. I believe that the hybrid plans will accomplish the opportunity for students to go back to school at least two days a week if you separate them to different cohorts. It's being done in many other communities. But I think it is so vitally important that we have our students going into the school, and these are half-days, these aren't full days, to get the necessary help that they need and to have the socialization they need. And I think this will help their mental state, and it will also help them educationally. So our job, and my job as mayor and a member of the school committee, is to make sure that I provide the most up-to-date information in regards to health. And I've just conferred with the head of director, Mary Beth. And it puts us in a situation where we are in the green, and we are ready to go as far as the health officials are concerned with a hybrid model if we wish, which would be the safest and the most conservative of the two. So I just wanted to present you with that information. And it is one, it should be one of the two options that will be discussed. I know that earlier, with Dr. Hackett, he wasn't 100% sure if he had had all the information necessary to show every school being utilized. That is the way that I believe it should be done. And I'm not sure if he had an opportunity to get those numbers, but obviously, he'll be doing the informational presentation. So I will tell you that based on all of the information that has been gathered, there is absolutely no reason at this point for Braintree not to, at minimal, have a hybrid plan that allows every student the opportunity to go back to school, at least in a capacity of hybrid learning. And also, I think that it really helps our students that need extra help and our students with IP. So I think that this is, it's a direction that I feel very strongly that we should go in. And I will listen to the presentations. But I will tell you that the second option, as long as it has every school being utilized, is the option that I was looking at being presented to you tonight. And it's the option that I think works best for our students based on the current health situation in our community. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak before the presentation, Mr. Chairman. And I look forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please, Dr. Hackett.
You're in luck, Mr. Mayor. You'll see it as we go through the presentation. So tonight, I'm gonna talk, basically, we have kind of 10 areas. There are a lot of slides, and I do apologize for that. But the slide deck is also a resource. It will be posted on our reopening website tomorrow. We will put it in other social media stations that we have. And we will be, as Mr. Devon pointed out this evening, is really the first time that we've presented three different options to the school committee. It's really two, but there's a second portion of option B. And tonight, what we want to do is get through all the information. We want to have the school committee have discussion, ask questions, clarifying questions. I do know that at the public comment, where we are, I believe, going back to our normal policy on the public comment, primarily 10 minutes, no more than three minutes per person. But that is also with the understanding that Monday night, as Mr. Devon mentioned, at 6:30, we'll be doing a public hearing for an hour, which will really consist mainly of audience questions and comments and dialogue. So with that, I would, I'll begin. We have in this presentation, I'll give you a little bit of a timeline, which I just kind of talked about for the school committee process. Then I'm just gonna go over the options, just upfront part, you know, the front part of the conversation so that it can frame what you were gonna hear next, so that in your head, you have an idea of the three that we're talking about or the 2.1. In the presentation, in across all of the options, there are several categories that we're gonna discuss tonight. Health and safety considerations, we won't do that at length. But to give you some ideas around what we are doing and the work that's been happening through the opening steering committee, just as a reminder, we have over 60 people in an opening steering committee who worked for several months, including in four working teams that have spent an awful lot of time on the planning, and they will continue to spend time on the planning and the implementation of the plan. As part of that also, tonight, we're gonna be talking about hybrid learning. We're gonna be talking about remote learning. We're gonna talk about special education and services. We'll do a couple of quick hits on technology, which those of you who have been with us before have seen some of that already. And then we're gonna do a more in-depth explanation of option A and option B. And again, option B does include actually two iterations. So, and then finally, we'll end with next steps. The final plan submission is the Department of Elementary and Education, DESI, was due actually on Monday, the 10th originally. They postponed it themselves to tomorrow, August 14th, for all school systems across the Commonwealth. I spoke with the commissioner today. We were granted an extension of our, the submission of our final plan until Tuesday, August 18th. That will fit into the timeline that you see below. Again, tonight's meeting is a presentation of the reopening options. Monday, the 17th, at 6:30, is a public hearing on the reopening options. And then on the 17th, directly and immediately following the public hearing, roughly 7:30, the school committee will discuss the options. And they will discuss the public feedback that they heard during the public hearing, take that into consideration. And then in that meeting, they will consider approval of whatever option is that they end up on. And that then will be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Tuesday. In any of these plans, the first day of school, students, the first instructional day, just a reminder, and the school committee's already taken action on this, will be Wednesday, September 16th. As another kind of reminder, the normal student year is 180 student days. And the commissioner negotiated with the MTA and other teacher unions that that year will be dropped from 170 to 100, I mean, 180 to 170, which will allow for 10 professional development days that are to be used prior to the start of school. So prior to Wednesday, the 16th, our staff and faculty will be engaged in professional development, from everything from COVID training and handling, as well as remote learning, hybrid learning, instructional technology, and other components of our plan to return. So starting with the end here, we have two options this evening. Both of them include, they both are a two-day, they're both a hybrid plan, which is a two-day in-person learning, three days remote learning per week. They include expanded in-person learning for special education students and those receiving special services, including things like English language education. They both include synchronous and asynchronous learning with daily schedules. They both, as per the state law, will now be implementing, again, re-implementing attendance requirements through the state, as well as grading. So it's going to be a regular school year, to the extent that this year going in will be close to regular. But students will be graded. That includes the high school level transcripts, and attendance will be required. We do have a possibility of some childcare options that would be contracted on a fee basis. They're fee-based. We do not have any kind of final plan on that yet, but we are exploring it. And we wanted to mention that to you as parents and staff tonight. And all, and both of these options also, and it's important to remember this, they do require, they do have the option for parent choice of a full remote option, which is what we're calling the BPS Remote Learning School. So just because we're looking at two options, one of which will be voted on Monday night, they all are hybrid in nature, that does not mean that parents have to send their students to school. We will have a full remote learning school opportunity for students and parents who decide to keep their child home. And that will be discussed at some depth this evening as well. Additionally, both of these options include food service, grab-and-go lunches for in-person learners at the end of the day and snacks throughout the day. It also will include grab-and-go meal service for all remote learners, including the days that students are not in school. So if they are in the hybrid, they're in-person, they would receive food during the day. But during the three days that they are not in-person, they would be able to access a grab-and-go meal service, which is, we are still running and have been running since, I think, the second day of our shutdown back in March. Again, possible childcare, just a little bit more detail on that. Options A and B1 would allow for both in-school, before and after-school care, as well as full-day care for remote days. Option B2 does not allow for the full-day option. And you'll see why a little bit later, but the bottom line is that all of our buildings would be in use in option B2. So a quick overview, option A. We've discussed this before. This is an option where we would have pre-K through 3 return in hybrid. And kindergarten would be housed at Braintree High School. Just a reminder that pre-K is already at Braintree High School. Kindergarten would also be there. And again, we are half-day sessions at kindergarten. There's no full-day sessions next year. And then grades 1 through 3 would be housed at East Middle School. Grades 4 through 8 would begin remote with phased implementation to hybrid on October 13th, in and around October 13th, grade 4 would start hybrid at East Middle School with grades 1 and 3. And then October 26th, grades 5 through 8 would begin hybrid. And grades 1 through 4 would return to their homeschool. So that would be on or about October 26th. Kindergarten then would return to the medical school, with some sections possibly being at the elementary schools if we need the space. We still obviously are getting registrations that are coming in over the course of the summer. And grades 5 through 8, homeschool, 6 through 8 students will attend East Middle School and South respectively. So if your child was intended to go to South Middle School or East Middle School next year in grades 6 through 8, then they would attend their respective school. And then all grade 5 students would attend East Middle School. So East would be 5 through 8. It would be grade 5, all students. And then grades 6 through 8 for the students who were, who are actually districted to East Middle School. East Middle School is going through the final stages of punch list and finishing. It will be, to the best of our knowledge, and we will be ready to go, and we are on time. Grades 9 through 12 will begin remotely with a plan to move to hybrid. So on November 9th, we would be looking to bring grades 9 through 12 back in a hybrid model at the high school. And again, the hybrid model is, every option, and the hybrid model is two days in-person learning and three days remote. It is a half-day of school for all students in every hybrid model. So they would be returning to home. Prior to lunch, we'll run the normal early release day schedule. Pending our transportation challenges, we may have to do some staggered start and end times for transportation. Brief overview of option B. So again, there are two iterations of this. Option B1, kindergarten students would attend inadequate pre-K at the high school, which are their normal homeschool placements. Grades 1 through 3 would be in-person instruction cohorted by homeschool. So in option B1, we are going to consolidate our grade 1 through 3 students to three schools instead of the current five schools that we have now. Flaherty would handle Flaherty and Ross students. Liberty School would take Liberty and Highland students. And Morrison would take Hollis and Morrison students. So grades 1 through 3 would be combined into three schools. All grades 4 through 5 would attend South Middle School. And grades 6 through 8 would attend East Middle School. That is district-wide for both South and East. And of course, grades 9 through 12 would attend the high school. Option B2, quite simply, again, a hybrid, two days in-person, three days remote. And all students would attend their assigned homeschool. So essentially, where we left in March is where we would begin in September. And we would again be in a hybrid model. So just to go through the health and safety considerations, I'm gonna pass it off to Assistant Superintendent Lee.
Very much, Dr. Hackett. So as was described earlier, there has been a steering committee under which a working group around health and safety has been working, using guidance from the state to develop local protocols for COVID. They are actually so lengthy to present all of them in this slideshow, would keep us here until midnight. So rather, I'll just give you some indications of the topics that are covered. So we have protocols designed and ready for implementation for following circumstances, those students coming into school. If a student becomes symptomatic at school. If a student is symptomatic on a bus. If a staff member is symptomatic at the school. If a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19. And at that point, what would happen to the close contacts of student or staff who tested positive? And then what we would do in the case that we had multiple cases within a school or throughout the district. As I said, they're rather lengthy documents, but I did pull some highlights just to give you a flavor of some of the, I think, more critical information that's in it. We would have morning checklist that we would ask each family to use to assess the child's health before sending them to school each day. Our first and foremost consideration is preventing anybody who is ill coming to the schools in the first place. We have nurse evaluation of any student displaying symptoms while at school. And we have a process for removing that student immediately or as quickly as possible from the general population in the school itself. There is required testing or a 14-day quarantine for symptomatic students or staff. If a test was taken and comes back positive, that individual, whether it be student or staff, would be in home isolation for a minimum of 10 days. And three days have to be passed with no fever or no symptoms before they can return. There would be tracing of the positive student or staff member's location from two days prior to the onset of symptoms to identify any close contacts of that individual. Elementary and middle school cohorted class members of students or staff who were considered to be close contacts would have to quarantine for 14 days or be tested. The high schools are slightly different, just in terms of how often and how long they spend with other individuals. So the tracing would involve identifying those individuals who were within six feet of the positive student or staff member for 10 to 15 minutes. They would be considered close contacts and again, would be instructed to quarantine for 14 days or to be tested. In terms of our preparation regarding the schools themselves, as has been indicated previously, the school system recently went through a NARESCO project to update the systems in every single building with the exception of East, those East and South, excuse me, which audited and repaired all of our systems to ensure that they are in good working order for the onset of this beginning school year. We have contracted out for assessments around air exchange for each one of the buildings in the district. And we are in the process of getting clear signage on social distancing and washing and other safety topics for distribution at each site prior to the opening of school. For those staff members and office members who would be interacting more frequently with the staff, there's been the installation of Plexiglas shields in those office spaces and other places where they would come in contact with the general public. At each school, we have identified isolation rooms for students who, you know, present with symptoms, who are immediately removed from the general population and brought to an isolation room so a determination can be made about whether or not they can be maintained in school. We have purchased and are ready to deploy hand-sanitized stations for all buildings within the district. And the town of Braintree Building and Health Divisions will review all the data and conduct final inspections of all the buildings that we would intend to use at the opening of the school year. We have developed cleaning protocols, again, in concert with state guidance. And these are just some highlights from those protocols. The protocols are much longer in terms of what custodians and maintenance staff would be required to do on a daily basis. But we have cleaning and disinfecting protocols for each site that focuses on daily cleaning of all high-touch surfaces in each building. We have protocols that have bathrooms being cleaned and sanitized three to five times each day. At the end of each day, we have, or in between, use of certain rooms, because there are some rooms that would have a different population come in midday. Hot surfaces would be disinfected each night using backpack sprayers. It's a spray-on application that dries in approximately 10 minutes and disinfects the surface. The water fountains in our schools would be closed after use. However, the bottle fill stations would remain open to keep kids hydrated. And we would have cleaning checklist confirming the time of cleaning of the site and individual elements of the building and the name of the individual who completed the work filled out each day. In terms of transportation, you know, bus transportation has been a concern of ours and has been guidance from the state relates to that. Physical distancing may require increased service guidelines as well as alternative routes and double runs. Buses would be operating basically on one-third fullness. And so staggering at school start or end times might be necessary. We will encourage parents to bring transportation to limit the use of our buses and our transportation services. While on the bus, students and staff will be required to wear masks. All windows will be kept open during the operation. Students will have assigned seating, which would be of assistance if we have to do some social tracing in terms of positive diagnoses. And buses will be disinfected between all runs. As you can see here, the typical bus for elementary students can carry 77 passengers. The red dots represent students. It's one student per bench, staggered left to right to increase the distance. We would seek to have monitors on the bus, you know, that may or may not be possible for every single run. They would sit at the front. Driver is obviously in blue. But what you can really take away from it is that we can get approximately 25 passengers on the bus, which is in essence, a third of capacity. What that means in terms of change moving forward as we approach the 2021 school year compared to 1920. For pre-kindergarten, all students had access to transportation. A lot of that is specialized transportation that would continue in 2020, 2021. For kindergarten, all students who live more than one mile, and at times under that, were provided transportation this past year. However, next year, only students who live more than two miles would be provided transportation. At the elementary level, again, students this current year who live more than one mile away and often under that limit were provided transportation. Again, the standard of two miles would be in play for 2021. At the middle school, all students who live more than two miles away and under very often were provided transportation. All students now in 2021 who live more than two miles in grade 6 and grade 5, if that grade level happens to be in a middle school level, would be provided transportation. However, grades 7 and 8 would not receive transportation services. At the high school, this past year, all students who live more than two miles away and again, often under that, were provided transportation. But at the high school in 2021, no transportation services would be provided. We would look to expand our ability to provide more bus service, but that would be dependent upon being able to get existing students to school who are to be provided transportation. Once that was accomplished, we would look to expand the circle of people that we can service in that regard.
And just a quick correction on the kindergarten line. Actually, in 2021, all students would be transported who live more than one mile. And in all the categories that Mr. Lee just mentioned, we've been very, very, I don't wanna say generous, but we've been very good at having the ability to transport students who may not live within those categories. But we really would have to stick to the strict guidelines for 2021 next year. With that, we have, I wanna talk to you a little bit about, give you an overview and some sample schedule and structure for hybrid learning. Remember, this would be the both in-person and remote days. So, Mr. Lee?
Very much again.
You're welcome.
One of the, you know, the big conversations that keeps coming up and questions around it are, what is the difference between synchronous instruction and asynchronous instruction? They're fancy terms for relatively simple concepts. When we speak about synchronous instruction, in essence, we're talking about instruction that happens in real time, where active participation is possible right there during the activity. It may and often does include, when you're in-person, it's very simple. Obviously, you're there in the classroom, you're interacting with the teacher that's synchronous. But when we get a little bit more remote, you know, we're talking about Google meets, that's one obvious example of synchronous instruction. The teacher's on the screen, interacting with students who are also on screens, and that's happening in real time. However, it doesn't stop there because it includes other activities that can happen. So at the same time, you can have two students in a moment working collaboratively on a shared Google document. You can have two students or more working together on a slide presentation that they'll later give in class. So while they're doing that work, that is happening in real time. They're actively engaged in the activity, and that is synchronous. It's happening then. The difference with asynchronous is really, it happens more on the individual's individual schedule. When they can get to the activity or the lesson, when it fits into their time and their schedule, that's when they do that work. A lot of what we as a district is, in essence, a blended learning model where students have access to an abundance of materials prior to walking into the classroom so that they are best prepared to use to the utmost the teacher's knowledge and the teacher's ability to help them work through that material. So those types of activities, again, don't have to happen at 9:05 on a Tuesday. They can happen when the individual student is ready to sit down and get the work done, when a family might be in a position to better support them. But they take a variety of different forms. A lot of people had questions about, why would we, you know, provide students with pre-recorded videos? Well, there are a lot of benefits to doing that. Not the least of which, a pre-recorded video can be watched over and over again so that a student can learn that material at his or her own pace by repetitively going through it and finding the things that mean the most to them. Very similar with screencastified presentations. Using Google Classroom, we can have a lot of interactions among class members with the teacher that don't have to happen in real time, that somebody can leave a comment and somebody later on can address that comment with their own thoughts and ideas about it. You know, virtual labs, and many of you have seen online versions of laboratory experiments that students can do. They don't necessarily have to do it with all their classmates in one time. They can do it at a time that makes the most sense to them. And certainly, work around independent research doesn't necessarily mean that you need all your classmates or your teacher present to do that. So when we talk about blended learning, you know, the hope would be that that asynchronous time helps best utilize the So when we talk about blended learning, you know, the hope would be that that asynchronous time helps best utilize the synchronous time. Where students might be with a teacher or might be working with their classmates because they're better prepared to do so. So just to clarify those concepts because it frequently gets confused. We have been asked to share some schedules, sample schedules is what we were told. And what we're going to present right now is a sample schedule and I can't emphasize this enough. This is one version of many versions of schedules that we are working on. There are teaching and learning groups, working groups under the steering committee that have been working. Around not only curriculum content, but also schedule iterations. There's one for Braintree High School, there is one for the middle schools and there's one for the elementary schools. They are all charged with the same level of work and they are all. Doing excellent work, trying to find the right solution to problems that we have with respect to a schedule. So I provide this schedule with the caveat that it is just that, it is a sample, it is a draft. It does not necessarily mean this is the schedule we would implement on the first day of school. It means that this is some of the thinking that we have right now about what a schedule might need to look like. In a hybrid capacity at the elementary level. So with all those disclaimers there, on the left hand side, under the blue column, you can see the sample of what a remote learner on a day. Their schedule might look like. So the day would start in a synchronous session with a morning meeting. Where the teacher or a staff member at the school greets the remote learner. It can relate to announcements, it can relate to some type of activity that is school wide. It could relate to some social emotional learning, but it gets the day started in a synchronous way. That could kick right into a brief mini lesson and again, we've talked about a lot of opportunities there. In terms of guidance counselors and work that they might need to do with students, building principles who might want to address members of his school or her school. Or other things that we deem as important to provide students at the beginning of the day. In a meaningful way, but in a short way to get them started thinking in terms of their academics. From nine thirty to ten fifteen would be an asynchronous academic block. The teacher that they will see the next day in person would have provided them with a lesson or some activities that they were to work on for those forty five minutes. And during that time, that would be the expectation. We build in breaks throughout the day because elementary kids need to get up and move around. That's certainly what we want them to be doing. In or around ten thirty to eleven, we would have specialists provide their lessons to students. And this could be done either synchronously or asynchronously, based on the lesson that the specialist wanted to provide and based on. Whether or not they felt that the synchronous way of providing that instruction was better or an asynchronous, you know, get out. Think of phys ed, for example, get out, run around, you don't necessarily need somebody hanging over your shoulder with a computer to do those types of things. So it would really be less independent. From eleven to eleven forty five, again, the student will be back working independently. Asynchronously on materials that the teacher had provided. And then we build in lunch and another movement break, you know, to give those kids a chance to kind of recalibrate for the afternoon of activities. Twelve thirty to one thirty, again, this remote learner goes back into academics. Again, this is asynchronous. You know, while some of these lessons are going on, there are teachers actually working with the kids who were in school that day. So that's why synchronous isn't always possible in these moments. But that's another hour block of academics that the student would do before taking a break. But then at the end of the day, we go back into a synchronous type of setup where the teacher can assign kids an activity. But is also available to check in, to provide support, to make contact. And round out that individual student's day who has worked remotely. So for a remote learner who is the very next day going to be in person, that is a sample of what a schedule might look like. The next day or during that same day, if you want to use a different example, during that same day, there's a group of students, a different cohort who are in school. So their schedule for that day, while that remote learner was doing all the activities I just described. They arrive around eight thirty and they get to their first academic block around nine o'clock. And the block is an hour in length and would involve both synchronous because they're in person, right? But could also involve asynchronous activities. If you visit our classrooms, the teacher is not. There for an hour talking to kids, you know, it's not a lecture format. Often they break out into other activities that may or may not involve collaborating with their peers. Sometimes it does involve independent work that they're working on by themselves. So that at that moment is asynchronous. There is a built in movement break. We've talked at length about the wearing of masks and how difficult that's going to be for some of our students. So within movement breaks, we can get, you know, ideally kids outside to take some time without mask and kind of breathe a little bit. Before going back into the building. Ten twenty to eleven fifteen, another academic block, again, teacher directed, teacher is there, kids are in the classroom. You know, these classrooms would have approximately twelve to fourteen students in them. And they would do the next academic lesson, whether it be math, English, science or social studies. Another movement break, we want to get them up and moving as often as possible, followed by another academic block. And as we get close to the end of their day in school, because their day would not end. You know, our teachers would be preparing them for what they would be doing once they got home. And what they would be doing on the following day when they would be in a remote setting. They would be dismissed at twelve thirty and as you can see at that moment, when they get dismissed, the teacher is going to become available for the students who are in the remote setting. So from one thirty to two o'clock, these students who were in school who are now gone home. Would have a teacher activity or some academic work to be done in their home in an asynchronous fashion. You know, working independently or working on assignments that the teacher has given them. And at two o'clock, the day could round out with some asynchronous specials that would occupy the students for the last thirty minutes of the day. So again, I present this as a sample, as a draft. At the end of the day, you know, we would round out with some daily closing activities for ten to fifteen minutes to kind of bring the day to a close with both sets of students. But this is one iteration of schedules we are considering for a hybrid model. It incorporates some of the thinking that we have at this point in time, but it is not a final product. Some of what we would ultimately determine would be the most efficacious schedule for a hybrid model in schools. Is a little dependent upon what ultimately is decided as a school committee in terms of how we will proceed. And we would be in a position in a short period of time after that decision to be able to present some finalized schedules. For people to see along these lines. Excellent, please. In terms of some of the philosophical ideas behind the hybrid learning on the remote days. Is that, again, we want kids to have synchronous and asynchronous experiences. We want that contact. We want to make it meaningful. We understand that there are limitations to how much synchronous work we can do on the remote days. But we would look to be providing that connection on a daily basis. As Dr. Hackett indicated earlier, attendance and grades for all elements of this schedule would be. Attendance would be taken and grades would be, you know, dependent upon student performance, what they passed in, how well they did on. On the work that they passed in and their competency related to the curriculum. We have every intention of providing teachers with professional development on all elements of this type of service delivery. And we will calibrate the work across the district to make sure that there's consistency and rigor across all of our programming. Additional technology training, you know, just to give you some indication of how, you know, this work can improve the synchronous and remote elements of what we're doing. Involves training around Google Classroom, which will be used from K to twelve this year, which is not the case last year. And some software that I believe Ms. Kidwell will speak about later on, really related to easing parents and students' ability to access. Some of their software applications here at school. But, you know, I'll stop at this moment because to hear me or Dr. Hackett talk about this, it gets a little rigid, so to speak, and boring. But on the call are Tim McDonald, who is principal of Hollis School. And Courtney Miller, who is our director of mathematics. And I'd start with Tim. And you're really with the question that as we present this material and we present this broad plan. You know, for you, Tim, what are the general implications and how do you think about what this might mean to Hollis and your staff and your students as you go forward?
Thanks, Jim, and good evening, everybody. Obviously, the sample schedule is a rough sketch and it's something that we would definitely tweak. When we get the chance to work directly with staff coming back in late August and early September. And I'm sure it would get modified even more as we get into the year. And so we're sure we're able to use every available resource and space. This is definitely not the same experience we had pre March. But it would definitely give us the opportunity to have that important person to person instruction and services that we desperately missed. And it'll give us a chance for live instruction to students when they're home. And no matter what plan is voted on, I think students, families and staff should know that this is going to be a lot different now than the spring. If the committee does go with an option where we're not in our home schools, the goal would be to keep families in school with their home school teachers and peers. Dependent upon how many students and families choose to come back along with staff members. We would help with that transition and potentially make some sort of like wing of an area, like a Hollis Wing or Liberty Wing at whatever school we land in. And again, if we are in an option where we're not in our home school. It would give the principals and administrators even more opportunities to collaborate because we'd be together. And we can even try to work together to implement some of the programs and events that we've had at our home schools. In a new, in a bigger building, of course, in a safe manner. As far as our staff is concerned, I think the biggest and most obvious benefit of the hybrid model is the ability to be with and teach our students. I know the families and everyone's very eager to get back and the teachers I've talked to are very eager to get back to work in some capacity. And they really miss their students. If we were not in our home schools, but we were looped in by grades, obviously the chance to collaborate amongst grade levels would be much easier. If teachers and grade levels were in the same building. And the benefit of having all staff in one building would eliminate the drive time that we would have for teachers that we share between schools. If a family chooses that hybrid model, staff would be in the position to immediately respond to students, which is think of something that we lacked in the spring. And teachers will have the chance to use that voice that they have in their own personal teaching style and let it shine through. Teachers in the spring, we followed very deliberate power standards, which is important for consistency. But that was a frustration for teachers because they didn't have the opportunity to have their own voice. And I think if a family chooses the hybrid model and we're in school, having that option to really get to know their teacher even better. And their teaching style even better is so important. As far as that sample schedule that you see in front of you, it is how we would envision a typical day. I think what's really important to note that at Hollis right now, as of today, our largest class size. Grades one through four is nineteen students. And if we did this hybrid model and split into cohorts, I believe it was Mrs. Bowes' class. She would have ten students, if they all chose to come back, ten students in one cohort and nine in another. So when you think about that during that sample elementary day when they're in person. Mrs. Bowes or whatever teacher it would be, would have nine or ten students with her. Most importantly, for three really solid academic blocks, nine to ten, really almost all of them are an hour long. And that's really important for parents to understand. Obviously, we're not able to get back in there every single day, every minute like we used to. But to be able to have a group of nine or ten in a class with a teacher for a half day is extremely important. And the idea of all students attending those synchronous morning meetings and afternoon meetings is really important, especially at the beginning of the school year. It's going to create that classroom culture and community that we need to develop at the beginning. And I think it's really important for accountability as well. The time at the end of the day is really important for the students that are in the building for the half day. And those, we have that down there twelve fifteen to twelve thirty, but it could even be longer. We heard loud and clearly from parents, especially at the elementary level, how difficult this process was in the spring. And I'm not saying that every kindergarten, first, second, third and fourth grader is going to remember exactly what's said to them when they're leaving school. But having the ability of a teacher to preview that remote learning before the kids leave and to to model and to show the kids what exactly they need to do. Would hopefully lessen the load on the parents as they, students arrived home. And they're juggling many different things at once in order to to get their child back on the computer and back ready for the rest of the of the day. The students that are not in the building, I think it's important to note, and Mr. Lee mentioned this, they could be serviced by a variety of people. The students that are home during their cohort, they could be serviced by our principals. By support staff, parent educators and by our specialists to be sure that they're engaged in their work, they're provided help as needed. To be sure they're meeting expectations and for those important social emotional check ins. Elementary principals have talked a lot, we're a close bunch, and we've talked a lot about the notion of all hands on deck come September. Knowing that we need to work together and utilize all staff in all capacities to support students that are in front of us and the ones that are at home. And lastly, I just want to say that as elementary principals, I know I speak for all of us, we're excited, but we're anxious for a decision to be made. Because we, along with everyone, have been working hard, not as hard as Jim and Frank, but we've been working hard as principals and curriculum directors. And we've been on different committees with members of the community and we're excited for a decision to be made. So we can start taking what we've already developed and do our best to implement it come September. Thank you very much, everybody. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. You know, Tim's perspective is obviously that of a building principal. Courtney Miller, who is our director of mathematics, has a little bit different of a lens. And, you know, with Courtney, I asked her if she could address some of the curriculum issues that come from a hybrid setting. Also, as it relates to the utilization of some staff members that are under her direction. And also the assessment of our students who obviously have not been in formal school for quite some time now. So, Ms. Miller?
Yes, thank you so much for having me. You know, when I think about a strong math program and even though I'll focus on math, I think that the same. Holds true for all of our different disciplines, all of our different disciplines, just with different verbiage. You know, a strong math program includes a balance of conceptual understanding, application and procedural fluency. So whether students are in person or they're learning through a hybrid model or even learning completely remotely, I think it's really important that we. Focus on keeping a balance of those varied lessons and activities for our students. You know, I think the best way to prepare for curriculum delivery this coming year is to really focus on the difference between synchronous and asynchronous lessons. Because that really holds true in all three of the possible models of instruction, whether we're fully in person, hybrid or fully remote. You know, on the surface, lessons focusing on conceptual understanding and application are certainly easiest during a synchronous session. Because the teacher is right there to respond to the noticing and wonderings of students in real time. And what the students are saying is really shaping how the lesson is going to continue on and end. So this can be done, whether it's the in person days of a hybrid model or during a Google Meet session on a remote day. Lessons focusing on procedural fluency, which just means fact practice or practice using a formula, are great for asynchronous lessons. You know, if we dive a bit deeper and I know Mr. Lee has talked a lot about this, but asynchronous lessons can also be used to prepare for a synchronous lesson. By having students watch a video or even submit some of their rough draft thinking about how to solve a problem, which the teacher can then use. During the synchronous session by showing actual student work and diving into a conceptual or application based lesson. For elementary students in particular, I'm really hopeful that we can have the math specialist play a key role in synchronous lessons on those remote learning days. Whether those lessons include moving instruction forward or also a combination of supporting students who are struggling or in need of some additional challenge. I'm excited to have Dreambox Learning subscriptions for all of the students in grades K to five, which will give that individualized math lesson to students asynchronously. Where the program really adapts to meet the needs of the students in real time. So as the students are working on problems. One student will get a different problem come up next than their peer based on how they responded to the original question. And we have similar products at the middle and high school levels with online components to the Illustrated Math Program. Desmos, Delta Math, Khan Academy, just to name a few. And again, while I'm obviously speaking specifically to math. I know that similar online adaptive products will also be available for other discipline areas. And I think the last thing that obviously a lot of people are thinking about and just going back to your original question, Mr. Lee, is really about the standards themselves. So whether we're hybrid, remote or fully in person, adjustments will have to be made to the scope and sequence at every grade level for every single course. To address that unfinished learning from this past spring and also in anticipation of needing some additional time to get the school year up and running. We know that students aren't coming back into the buildings and or are starting their academic learning until September sixteenth. So we'll certainly have to adjust those scope and sequences. But for me, based on all the articles, the webinar. But for me, based on all the articles, the webinars, and professional development opportunities I've immersed myself in this summer, I know it's important to focus on grade-level standards and to address that unfinished learning when it's needed for a particular grade level or course. So rather than starting this school year off with the unfinished learning that happened last school year, which really is setting us up to bump everything back, we would focus a scope and sequence on grade-level content and infuse those missed standards throughout the school year. So we are looking at focusing just on the critical standards as much as possible. But again, we would be infusing that missed content throughout the school year when students actually need it. And you know, when you think about math standards, everything is building. So you think about the prerequisite standard and know that you're really not reviewing it, you might be showing it for the first time for students. And like with everything that has been discussed in terms of the reopening plans, I think it'll be really important to frequently check in with teachers and students through assessments and collaboration sessions to make adjustments along the way to see really, you know, the successes and also the challenges that this new school year will bring. So I'll bump it back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. With all that, just a last piece on hybrid learning. There's been a lot of questions actually from people about, you know, how would you cohort and why would you cohort? So obviously, the reason you cohort is because we need to, in essence, have the population of students who are coming to school on a daily basis. So again, one group would come to school on one day while that other, second group is at home. And then they would switch roles on the next day. And you know, the group that was in school would stay home and the group that was home would come in school. So it's driven by safety. It is driven by our desire to maintain that six feet of distancing in our buildings, regardless of the model we ultimately land on. In terms of how we would determine cohorts, we would look at a number of different factors, these three examples of that. Certainly, we would want to try to ensure that students living in the same home were on the same cohort so that it would make it easier for whatever arrangements that individual families had to make. We would seek to try to find geographic cohorts within that mix to reduce transportation problems and make it as efficient as possible to get students to school within the new state guidelines. And at the high school level, we would look at the distribution within the course. I mean, it's a little bit different at the high school level in terms of how they schedule, but we would look to identify how by cohorting can we maintain the best balance within classes where all the students obviously would not be in school on a given day. So that, as Mr. McDonald explained, you know, an elementary classroom could look forward to having a group of nine kids in class on one particular day, but 10 the next. That's a really nice mix. At the high school, you know, depending upon how you cohort, and if there are 26, 27 kids in the class, that could get skewed to a point where it really would be very difficult for the teacher. And we try to ameliorate that. Has also been mentioned, depending upon the model we land on, we would seek to cohort by home school. It would be our intention to keep home school students and home school staff members together. So we would use that also as a determinant in terms of our cohorting, which is somewhat dependent upon the model that we ultimately decide upon. But regardless, would still be a goal that we would have. So you know, this first and primary goal is safety and the configurations would represent that. You know, we also need to take into consideration what those groups look like when they ultimately do return to school. So remote learning. Usually prompting. Systems over 10 in the table.
Equally, not.
So when we talk about remote learning, in a lot of what I'll discuss, it relates to all the grades. Obviously, one of the options on the table has grades four through 12, opening the school year in a full remote model. But what we also know is there is a population of students and families who regardless of the model that we would choose for the district, would be uncomfortable returning to school. And as I believe Dr. Hackett mentioned at the beginning of the program, there would be an option for all of those families to choose a full remote option, meaning that regardless of whether the school itself went hybrid or the school itself went back full-time in person, they could remain in a full remote option. So the first slide is really, got to speak a little bit about this. So the first thing that we would provide for is ensuring that those students had the technology and the support that they would need to access the remote learning school. Last spring, the tech department did an outstanding job getting devices and hotspots out to those families who needed them. That would be our first priority because obviously, remote learning is impossible if you can't access the remotest, remote learning. Right this moment, we are looking at the use of both in-house personnel but also some outside learning platforms to deliver the most comprehensive program possible. And we're looking at outside learning platforms, not knowing exactly the direction not only will the committee take, but also what the virus might take. So when we open school, if we were to open school in a full remote setting, it would be relatively simple to have every single student join that remote program and begin their academic year moving through the curriculum in that remote setting. One of the questions is if we opened in a hybrid fashion at all of our schools or in short order of school opening, we moved to a hybrid option, what would the impact of those full-remote students be? Would they be able to continue with their current course load fully remotely? In some situations, it's a little bit easier than others for that to occur. As you go up in the grade levels, it becomes increasingly difficult. So we would explore options that would, through third-party vendors, that could provide content in all subject areas. And our staff would be facilitators in that work, would work directly with those remote learning students to go through that curriculum. But both options are on the table at the present because we're still looking to find out exactly what direction we as a district will take. So although we are exploring both those options, we have not settled on one of those options because we need a little bit more information to make a good decision. If a family chooses to start the school year fully remotely, but at some point, they have a change of heart and they decide they would be comfortable sending their children to school, we would identify for them logical transition points. It would be difficult for not only that student, but the teacher and the students within the classroom to have them drop in at any point in time during the school year. We would identify the most logical places and the least disruptive places for those students to rejoin their classmates in an in-person setting. And we would make that clear to parents and we would work with them up until that moment where that transition would be possible. Another option families have, regardless of what the committee decides in terms of programming, is they always have the option of homeschooling their children, which in essence becomes a private school situation for that family. If your child is of compulsory school age, meaning up to the age of 16, you would have to provide a homeschooling plan to actually the superintendent's office for approval. If that were approved, then obviously, you would homeschool your child completely independent of what was happening in the Braintree Public Schools. Full remote option, this is more about those students who, if we went, if they had to start remotely, but we were able either immediately or sometime down the road to go to a hybrid or a full-in-person scenario, would come back to the school. So although they could start remotely, this is where they could come back to school in a hybrid setting. So very similar to what you heard through Mr. McDonald in the presentation about the elementary schedule, we would want to see synchronous instructions and support be part of the program every single day. So if students at Braintree High School, for instance, start the year remotely completely, then every single day, there'd be some type of synchronous contact with those students to keep them working through the curriculum. We would use curriculum guides across the district just to ensure that all of our students are getting a similar, doesn't have to be identical, but a similar academic experience. And again, we always do, but the focus would be on some critical standards that would kind of provide the backbone to the curriculum we're providing. But as Mr. McDonald indicated, you know, flexibility for individual teachers would still be there to shine and use some of the creativity that they all possess. We would look to ensure that there's more interactions almost from a social perspective between students, whether they are in a remote setting or a hybrid setting in different sections throughout the school community. Mr. McDonald talked about some of the ideas that he had as a principal, reaching out to students and having activities that are school-based in, you know, in terms of community building. Also, some things around social-emotional learning that we can provide. If you get to the upper grade level, certainly, you can talk about extracurricular activities. But the goal in general would be to increase the interactions among students, whether it would be in-person or whether it would not. We heard loud and clear that was one of the biggest things missing from the experience in the spring. Obviously, the summer for some families has not been drastically different in terms of their children's ability to get together with friends. So we would be looking to increase that connection. It is our goal to give all families a schedule that is explicit with times and expectations for each class and every course, and that would be consistent week to week. So that regardless of what modality we determine is the best for us, that it would be a predictable schedule that your family could plan around and that you would know it well ahead of time. You know, some questions that have come up related to would we livestream our classes to kids at home? And the answer to that would be no. You know, the privacy of students within the classroom is one issue, but it's the focus that we want to have the teacher who has students in front of him or herself. We want them working on, you know, concepts and clarifications with those students directly, knowing that we're going to have the opportunity to work with the other students who are in a remote capacity at that moment when either they return to school or the synchronous Google meets happen for remote students. So they just make clear that is not something we are planning on doing. Same caveats as the last schedule that we put out, this is a sample. This is a draft. This is not something we have landed on completely, but just to give some indication of the thinking around some of the work we are doing. This is a sample from the high school working group that, and this actually relates directly to a remote learning opening where all students would be at home and what a schedule might look like. As I think has been mentioned, if not, I'll say again, a lot of the work that we are doing is about finding schedules that transition easily from remote to hybrid to in-person settings. We need the ability to move back and forth between those settings as quickly and as seamlessly as possible. So a lot of the schedule work that we consider really takes those things into consideration. So what you'll see here, again, is a full-remote potential schedule at Braintree High School. It would open up in the morning at 7:35, which is when Braintree High School opens now. It would start with A Block. It is, if you go just read through it, there are six periods on the schedule. Braintree High School last year was built on a seven-period schedule. Doesn't mean that all seven periods meant a day, but the overall schedule a student would receive had seven periods in it. This would refine it down to six periods. We see that as more efficient and more effective. Takes into consideration a lot of the studies that some of our kids receive and, you know, eliminates some of that work and provides them with more meaningful academics. As you can see, this iteration of the schedule does not rotate. The periods go A, B, C, D, E, F. We have discussed and talked quite a bit about the potential and our desire to perhaps rotate this. We haven't decided. That's exactly what we want to do at this point, but it is something we are considering. So the academic blocks would be the individual student following their schedule. So a student, not all students, but a student might have English during A Block. And so at 7:35 on Tuesday, that student would, you know, begin their A Block class, that English class. And it would begin in a synchronous fashion. It would begin with a Google Meet. We have talked a lot in the working groups about what is the appropriate balance in a given class between synchronous instruction and asynchronous instruction. What we do not want to see are students sitting in front of a screen for six hours a day, sitting through Google Meet after Google Meet after Google Meet. We want teachers to interact with them directly every, you know, every single day. But we want that time to be spent wisely. We, you know, if what they need to present to students is five to 10 minutes, then that Google Meet might last five to 10 minutes. If it happens, the lesson needs it to be longer. The teacher would have the flexibility to make that period longer. We have discussed developing minimum and maximum amounts of time in a given period where that type of synchronous Google Meet is appropriate. We have not completely landed on what we feel is the best answer, but that is work we are doing. So again, student begins that Tuesday with English. Their next class might be science. That C Block might be a resource classroom that they have. But all those classes would be meeting and that the schedule would go Tuesday through Friday in that remote fashion. So they would have that schedule each week if we were to be completely remote. What is unique about this particular draft is Monday. Monday would be an asynchronous day for a lot of the classrooms, which would provide some opportunities for teachers to collaborate. But that does not mean the kids would not be responsible for a certain thing. So on Monday, it gives us the opportunity to have advisories and clubs meet. It allows us to do some asynchronous learning for students while at the same time being able to provide other supports to students as needed. You know, you heard some ideas about elementary-level support. At the high school level, it can be guidance meetings. It can be special education meetings. It can be 504 meetings. It could be office hours on the part of teachers. There are a lot of opportunities here to make different types of connections with students on those Mondays, while at the same time providing some really needed collaborative time for our teachers to get some work done. In the afternoon, you can see some more of those support times outlined in terms of guidance, learning center, office hours, and the like. So that Monday, if you think in terms of transitioning to a different type of schedule, would be critical if we were to move from a remote learning schedule to a hybrid schedule where we would have to cohort students into two groups. And all of a sudden, you can see that one remote day on Monday with cohorts coming in on, one cohort would come in on Tuesday and Thursday while the second cohort would come in on Wednesday and Friday. So those are some of the ideas. Again, this is a work in progress. You know, most students would take, most students would take five courses, would take PE as their sixth course. Some of our students would have six classes built into their schedule that would meet, and PE would be taken on that Monday block, as you can see. So work in progress, complete draft, just some of the thinking that's going on right now as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish. You know, as I mentioned, really talking a lot about what is the balance between synchronous and asynchronous is some research out there that says even at the high school level, three and a half hours of synchronous meets is more than enough and actually too much at that point. We want kids to be able to work independently in small groups as well. So the schedule ultimately will take those things into consideration. Just again, to highlight some things that I've already said. The schedules including cohorts that we would develop if we were talking about a remote learning scenario, would take into consideration how well we can transition the schedule into a hybrid or full-in-person day. You know, there's been some questions that have come in around why would we de-level the middle school, particularly if we're going to go remotely. Cohorting those students remains a safety issue. We can limit the interactions between groups of students if we cohort them. So even if they began in a remote program, it is our desire, obviously, to get back in person and having those cohorts ready to go and seamlessly moving back into a hybrid situation at school maintains the safety that we so strongly want to keep. Relationships, I mentioned a number of the different types of things that we would look to do to maintain those connections among students and staff. You know, Dr. Hackett and some other people, Mr. McDonald indicated how much our staff misses our students. And so I believe and hope that our students miss our staff. And so we would be looking to maximize those opportunities, even in a remote capacity, to make sure that the kids feel connected to the school. Ms. Miller talked a little bit about some of the software that we purchased that adjusts the students' learning, math, it would be Dreambox. In the English area, Literacy Pro is some software that we purchased. But every single department has really spent a lot of time researching and finding the best type of online instructions for the schools, not only at the elementary schools, which I highlight here, but also at the upper levels as well. Professional development is a theme you're going to hear a lot during the presentation. Truly, we do have 10 days at the beginning of school year to get some of that work done. But technology around best practice, technology in instruction about best practices for remote learning and asynchronous versus synchronous pedagogy is something that we feel is very important and is something we want to work a lot with as teachers return to the buildings. Special education services. I'm not going to wait for Dr. Hackett. I'm just going to keep going. On the call as well is Dr. Peter Platt. Dr. Platt is one of our administrators in our special education department. We've had a lot of questions about some of the, kind of, the legal elements of special education, particularly around evaluations and team meetings and such. And so, Dr. Platt, if I could just ask you just to kind of give a broad overview of how the special ed department will be approaching those elements. of how the special ed department will be approaching those elements as we get into the school year.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the special education department has been using the guidance issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And are prioritizing bringing back preschool students and students with the most significant and complex needs. Oh, the slide just changed.
I've got one job to do when he told me to.
So to reiterate some of what Mr. Lee has said is this is a work in progress. This will be contingent upon the plans that are selected by the school committee and how students are sort of placed. But the current thinking is to have students, the preschool students from Braintree High School, the Flaherty students in ILC, the Morrison students in ILC substantially separate with the most significant needs in substantially separate in-person programming for half-days a week with one remote day. Having the students from Morrison ILC in inclusion kind of program, Flaherty Developmental, kindergarten ILC at Braintree High School, and the language-based students, those in substantially separate in-person model to half-days in-person in a substantially separate classroom. Inclusion to half-days in-person included in a cohort and one day remote. And then providing students with related services with two half-days in-person included with their cohort and then three days remote. So again, this is a work in progress and will be developed depending on the plan that is actually selected by the school committee. But that is our current thinking at the elementary level to provide those students with the most face-to-face instruction that we can in a safe, a safe manner. In terms of the secondary students, it's a similar type of thinking. So prioritizing the in-district programs, particularly for the students who have the most significant disabilities. So those would include students in the Strides placement at Braintree High School. The Link substantially separate placement from South would potentially come up to the high school. Again, contingent upon whichever plan the school committee selects. Returning those students for four hours of in-person instruction. So in that half-day model, four days a week with one day remote. The Prove Wave students and the Launch students would be at Braintree High School, co-horted in a hybrid model for two days of a half-day of instruction with three days remote. The Language Enrichment Program at the high school would similarly be in a co-horted hybrid model for a half-day program, two days a week, four hours a day, and then three days remote. The Achieve Program and the Alliance Program would also be at the high school, similarly in that half-day hybrid model for four hours of instruction, two days per week and three days remote. And we look at having the students in the Reach Placement potentially at East. Again, like the Prove Wave students, co-horted in a hybrid model, two days a week for a half-day of instruction and then three days of remote instruction. And for the students who have placements that are general, you know, general education placements. So at the high school, that would include the Learning Center students, students in Compass and Coast. And in the middle schools, students in Resource, Pathways, the Bridge Program and the Links Inclusion Program. So providing those students with support blocks scheduled into their schedules, both in hybrid and remote settings. Providing them with, as Mr. Lee has explained, asynchronous and synchronous support. Scheduling Google meets to provide them with group support in real time. And the special education staff would prioritize meeting with general education teachers to coordinate supports and services. One of the sort of elements of this would be significant parent communication. One of the things that we know we need to do is to develop plans for parents outlining how students are receiving their services. So we would certainly prioritize that. And, you know, we know that parent communication is a critical element of this. For some of the special education services, including speech and language, specialized reading, physical therapy and occupational therapy, we're looking at prioritizing that based on the student's individual schedule and doing a combination of face-to-face and remote support with consideration of the student's individual needs and making sure that that service delivery is in compliance with the student's IEP. With students in the language-based program, it's really dependent on the schedules that are selected. But language-based students could be co-horted and brought back to school in a half-day hybrid model to start the school year. In terms of out-of-district placements, residential placements have accepted the return of the Braintree Public Schools students. Students in a private school setting, those schools are prepared to deliver 180 days of instruction. And for students who are in a collaborative setting, which is more in line with programs that are delivered in a public school setting, those schools are prepared to deliver 170 days of instruction like the Braintree Public Schools are doing.
Dr. Platt, will you mind speaking a little bit about the IEP process, including team meetings, three-year reevals and the like?
Yes, so we will, to prioritize the safety of students and staff members, we will be continuing to do IEP meetings remotely. So depending on whatever model is in place, staff members would join a Google meet with parents remotely to start. But we have to make sure that we are doing that in line with the expiration date of a student's IEP. And we would also be doing initial and three-year reevaluations and meeting the timelines around those. We're looking at some innovative models for completing those evaluations, depending on whichever model the school committee chooses in terms of how we go back. And one of the things that we know is that there might be some students whose parents have chosen have chosen remote learning for them and that we need to begin the practice of doing remote evaluations. So we have a team in place that will be looking at the best tools to deliver that type of remote evaluation and being able to deliver a comprehensive evaluation similar to the ones that we've always done in person.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Platt. And just want to emphasize as you walk through some of those program placements and what it would mean in terms of coming to school two or four days a week. That would be the case whether Braintree High School or other sites are in a remote setting or if they themselves actually return. So it is an example of trying to prioritize the students who need the most support to get as much face-to-face time with those students as we possibly can. And the special ed department has worked, I think, extremely hard to make sure that we're in a position to deliver as many services in person as we possibly can. Similar is another population of students for whom we want to ensure that we really get some support to as quickly as possible and in person as often as we can. And those are our English language learners. And, you know, this just kind of breaks down some of the service delivery that would and what it would look like at both the elementary and the secondary level. So in the elementary, if they happen to be in person, it would be a combination of push-in and pull-out support, depending upon individual student's schedules and their level of need. EL learners are classified by level of need. So our staff would make some determinations about the rationale for pulling kids out of an existing class. But if that was in the best interest of the students, they would do so. And the remote setting, they're prepared to provide both synchronous and asynchronous support to students. In both settings, they are looking at possible expanded day services, not only in person, but also remotely to try to get as much service to these students as we can. We would be able to still test new students coming in according to DESI protocols for EL eligibility. Some of that testing can be done remotely, so that our staff will still be able to identify those students who need EL services. And we will retain the compliance that we need to have with respect to required hours of instruction, whether it be in a hybrid setting, whether it be an in-person setting or remotely. At the secondary level, they would pod some of the kids who are EL learners who need a little bit more support than others for direct support and curriculum from remote learning. Upper-level students could receive some more support through the expanded day service that they would offer at Braintree High School, both remotely and if we were in a hybrid setting in a hybrid afternoon. Remotely, EL students are invited into the schools to receive direct instruction and support their core remote classes. So again, if Braintree High School or the middle schools are fully remote, our EL staff are looking to provide opportunities for students to come into the building to get some more direct instruction and direct support, even while some of their peers might not be in that position yet to return to school. Office hours by all English language teachers to work directly with regular staff are schedules that they've created and are ready to implement to address the needs of EL students. This is a more of a broad statement, not necessarily around programming, but just in general, some of our staff preparation has been mentioned several times. We have 10 days at the beginning of school year to get some PD to all of our staff members. First and foremost on that list are trainings around COVID safety and protocols. But also in just, you know, from an instructional standpoint, just as importantly, some trauma-informed instruction, PD around technology is that will obviously be in greater use this year. As Ms. Miller had indicated, some opportunities to work on curriculum revisions for our students, working on our ability to teach effectively, both in a remote setting and a hybrid setting. And we have been doing ongoing work around cultural responsiveness and it's something we want to kick the year off with as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. It was long and comprehensive and I feel
It was long.
I feel like I got a good break. So as part of any plan, obviously, technology is a major component. And we have talked about the work we've done around some investments in software systems and platforms and actual hardware. We will continue to make sure that our neediest families and learners are provided with devices. And we will continue to make sure that we have, all students have wireless access as well or access to the internet. So with that, we thought it would be good just to take a couple of minutes just to, again, go through the technology that we will be implementing in the fall. So with that, I'd like to ask our Director of Technology and Accountability, Rebecca Kidwell, to join us.
Hi all, how are you?
Good evening.
So I thought we'd start this evening with where and how we'll be using technology during this school year. In the last presentation, about a week and a half ago, maybe, time has no meaning and quarantine. In the last presentation, when I spoke with you all, we talked about distributing devices to families. And the more grades we have in a remote or hybrid model, how we need to ensure there's technology in the home for all students to participate fully. So we'll be ensuring that all students have access to the technology they need. But that will mean less individual technology during the in-person school day, especially at the elementary grades. Pre-K to 4 students who borrow devices from the school district will not be asked to bring those devices to and from school. It's not age-appropriate. It wouldn't be safe for the students or the devices. We will, in the event that grades five through 12 are returning in a hybrid model, we will be able to implement the planned Bring Your Own Device program and all assistive technology programs will still continue. We'll be minimizing shared technology that would require disinfection during the school day between users. So this is applicable primarily in the upper grades where there might be a class that uses a computer lab. We might minimize use of that lab or limit it to just specific groups on specific days so that we would not be disinfecting frequently during the school day. Supporting all remote learners, we have multiple apps and resources that I spoke with you about last time. But to mention a few of them again and provide some clarifications on some. We have the ClassLink Launchpad pictured down there in the bottom right. This provides QR code and single sign-on resources to limit the number of logins that students and families have to be aware of. We'll be using Google Classroom, Google Meet and the Google Jamboard app, which can act like an online collaborative whiteboard. We'll be using Screencastify and Flipgrid. Flipgrid is pictured in the bottom left. Both of those can help with asynchronous video instruction and assessment. We'll also be using some browser extensions and add-ons like Google Read and Write, PDF editors and other accessibility features that we will be installing on devices that the district owns. And we will be providing instructions if you own the device yourself to make sure that you're able to install them. And unlike remote learning in the spring, we'll be avoiding printables for equity by providing paper materials when needed when the students are in school. So for communication and tech support for families, we're looking to ensure that the Google Classroom is the home base for assignments in grades K through 12. Integrated preschool will still use the public website, email and the new ParentSquare communication app. If you saw me talk about this previously, we talked about grades five through 12 having access to email. We've now moved it to grades four through 12 having access to email. And I'll tell you in advance, the grade three teachers have already asked me if those students can do email. It would be a discussion with the entire grade three team about whether or not that was an appropriate resource for grade three to have. And if it is, then we will set that up. But we would always make it a safe email account for students in middle school or elementary school, ensuring that senders and receivers are within the Braintree schools. This ParentSquare communication app is finally in development and we're ready to go with that. So you'll be hearing more about that in the weeks to come. We also have a new webpage with Family Zone, which is a provider of an app and some informational tools about how to keep your child safe online. So if you just purchased a new device for your child to be part of BYOD in grades five through 12, or if you're worried about your younger child coming home with a school device, please know that devices borrowed from the school do have lots of filtering and safety features on them already. But additionally, we wanted to provide more resources for parents and resources that you could use on devices that are personally owned by your family to help protect your students online and keep them safer.
Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate all of your work and your team's work. You have done a tremendous job over the course of certainly the spring and the summer, getting ready for the school year. So with all of that, as if there needs to be anymore, I do want to just go back through the options. If you recall from the beginning of the presentation, we talked about essentially two options. But the second one having two different iterations of it. We would like to start with Option A, which was an option we had put out a few weeks ago. We were thinking about how do we return in a way that is safe? And how do we return in a way that is sustainable? And of course, what I want to preference this discussion with tonight or just the presentation of these options is there would not be an option up here that we would not feel was safe. Each option has its own strengths and weaknesses. Each option is well thought through in terms of the safety protocols. Transportation is an ongoing process, obviously, as soon as we know where the school committee decides to go in terms of the actual approved plan. There are many elements that still need work. And I just also want to make sure everyone knows that after tonight with the presentation, again, there will be a public hearing on Monday night at 6:30. That will be the opportunity. I will do a very, very, very brief overview. And that really is then going to be your time to ask questions. We will do the best we can in that session to actually try to answer questions and provide answers. But I also remind you, and you'll see at the end of this presentation, there are a couple of different ways to get ahold of us, multiple ways to get ahold of us. So for those of you who have been emailing us, rest assured that we have been going through those emails. And while you may or may not be getting a direct response from us, we have been putting them into a frequently asked questions document that we hope to have posted by Monday morning so that you can see the questions that some of you have asked, others have asked. We've tried to put them in some kind of general categories so that you'll have a chance to see questions off facilities or questions on instruction. We did find that obviously, and understandably, a lot of you asked the same questions, which so that will make it a little bit easier to be able to see for us to respond. I also just want to say that even though the school committee will be voting on Monday night after the public hearing for the submission of the plan to the Department of Education. And I think we all know, and we've all lived personally, certainly professionally, with the ever-changing environment that we've been dealing with since the spring. So there's still quite a bit of time between now and the start of the school year. There are a lot of details that need to be continued to work out. And there are a lot of questions that will continue. And we have a fantastic group of people together working on the steering committee as well as the working teams. But we will also begin to do some parent sessions, additional staff sessions, but some, not just overview sessions, but we probably will start to break them out a little bit into more specific areas such as special education, for example, or high school schedule, or high school experience, or co-curriculum athletics, or different ways for us to be able to kind of put a theme behind the sessions so that those of you so that those of you who have a particular interest have the opportunity to participate. Those will be administratively run, and we will be really just essentially taking your questions and trying to do the best we can to give you answers. That those sessions will also inform our planning as we continue to really get toward the implementation. So there is certainly plenty of time for you to both provide feedback and input to us as we get closer to the beginning of the school year. With that, I just will briefly kind of go over Option A. This option again is the pre-K through three hybrid and a four through 12 remote. Pre-K would remain at the high school that is currently its location, and that would not change. We would bring the kindergarten, again, only half-day sessions this year. We'd bring kindergarten to the high school. And they would be part of the high school wing, one of the high school wings. So essentially, in this model, the high school, I mean, the pre-K and kindergarten will have essentially the run of the high school. And this, again, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about the thinking behind this, but that would be our starting point. So this would begin again on September 16th. Grades one through three would be located at East Middle School. And grades four through 12 would be phased into a hybrid model. So just to kind of go over the phased approach, and the phases look very similar for the first two, for every model we're talking about. I won't go through these in detail, but you heard a little bit about technology. We'll be deploying devices, getting some remote sessions set up, trying to do some outreach to parents. And then we'll be getting the week of, or Tuesday, September 1st through the 15th, we will start to do some orientations. Those will be likely both remote and potentially in person if we are able to do that safely and depending on the model. And we will continue to provide some in-person and asynchronous screenings and assessments and supports for our specialized populations. We'd love to be able to think we could get some co-curricular activities, clubs going during that time as well so that we could make other connections to students. And again, on the phase three or the actual day, first day of school, September 16th, then we would be going into pre-K through three in hybrid and grades four through 12 in remote. The fourth phase of Option One would then begin to get at bringing additional grade levels and students to school into a hybrid model. And I will just emphasize again, and not that you need to hear me say it again, but when we say hybrid, we mean the same thing for all grade levels. It's a half-day, two days in person, three days remote. So from the week of September 28th to the October 9th, we will be assessing the conditions of how we're doing, both of how we are implementing the protocols, how students are responding to them, how staff are doing. We will make adjustments along the way. You know, this model, this, really, this option is about trying to make sure that we get these routines and protocols down, that in a sense, it's a bit of a pilot focused on our youngest learners because we know that while all learners need to be in front of their teachers, we recognize also that pre-K through three aren't really at the stage where they are independent learners. And it's very difficult to provide instruction in literacy and numeracy at these ages without having in-person instruction. So the idea behind this is we would have a couple of steps into going to where we have everybody back in a hybrid learning model, which is obviously the goal, the first step, while at the same time, hoping that we can get to a place where we are actually in a full return, full day. Yeah, so it's step one, we would then look to bring in grade four on October 13th. If conditions would not allow it, then we would bump that return for grade four to October 26th. And again, continue to monitor the conditions. Our goal in Option One, obviously, in every option, but this one, this option really tried to focus on sustainability. And I think that, you know, as we look around and see the different plans that the different school systems are putting out, most are, or many are going to hybrid, some are going to full remote. But in the end, the concern for us in any of these options is how long will we be able to sustain it? We know where the virus, of course, gave us the numbers for, the most recent numbers for both the state and the town of Braintree, as well as the advice or the guidance of the governor. But we also know that there'd be a lot of students returning to colleges and universities. We will start to see influx of people who have not necessarily, not necessarily from Massachusetts and may have a different approach to how they protect themselves and others from the virus spread. It would not be surprising to see a bit of a bump in the number once we start getting into those weeks and months. And we want to be in position as best we can to make sure that we can protect our students in all these models. But if we can maintain that, the hybrid, and keep that sustainable, then that is the goal in all of these. This particular option just really emphasizes that. We have on October 2nd, step two, on October 13th to 23rd, we'll, again, we'll be doing an assessment of conditions, making adjustments. And then on October 26th, assuming step one was, is implemented, but on October 26th, we would then return to hybrid expand, we would go to hybrid expansion, we would return all grades one through four to their home schools. Kindergarten would be returned to inadequate and potentially some home schools if we do not have the room. Again, those are half-day sessions. Then we would have a couple of options for grades five through eight. We would maintain the home schools for the grades six through eight. So six through eight students would return to their home school. That would be both South and East respectively. And then in this, in this option, all grade five would go to East Middle School in the hybrid model. Grades, another option could be to bring grades four and five in hybrid to South Middle School and then utilize East Middle School as a district-wide grade six through eight school. Finally, with the shifting of kindergarten out of the high school, that puts us in a position where we would be able to consider opening up the high school for our students in grades nine through 12. And I should say, and I, throughout all these models, if you remember from one of the beginning slides, that there are, there are a lot of things that are common across all these, not, not the least of which is what you heard tonight about special education programming and supports for students with special needs and who need special services and supports. If the conditions do not allow for us to implement on October 26th that step, then we reassess and look to implement that on November, whoops, I'm sorry, November 9th. So with all of that happening, then we would look to bring the high school students, grades nine through 12, back into high school. That would be again, in a hybrid model. And again, we have a built-in assessment period that provides for an automatic delay if in fact, conditions do not allow us to make that step. The strengths and challenges of Option One. We certainly know that East Middle School is a state-of-the-art facility. All the systems are new. We have large group spaces that we can really spread out in. We have outside courtyards that are usable for instruction as well. We have, it's, again, it's a conservative and cautious approach to make sure that we are doing this slowly and that we are learning as we go so we can adapt our protocols. You know, none of us have done this before, and everyone knows how to run a school. And we know what school looks like as educators, as teachers and administrators and school committee members. But this is a whole new world for us. And, you know, the idea of what does it look like when we have 600 first graders, second and third graders dropped off or at the, at a school? And how do they come in? How do they make sure they stay physically distanced? They're going to, they're going to want to see their friends. Students at that age, as we all know, are social, they need support, they need physical support sometimes. And, you know, we know that some of our kids like to, you know, receive that contact with teachers. And that will be very different for our kids this year. I hope that everyone understands that this is not going to look like anything that we, that we have known school to look like. We also know that, whether we want to think it or not, that our students are going to come back. Some of them with some significant trauma, some behavioral issues, some learning challenges. They are not going to come back and sit in rows, six feet apart, with their hands folded on the desk, looking straight ahead, which is really kind of the guidance. So if we can think about kindergarten classroom, for example, where generally students are in and around their teacher all the time. They're on the floor, carpet squares or carpet, they're doing reading groups, they're having a book read to them with a teacher in a chair. They gather around each other. That is not going to be what this looks like at all. And that really is there in the challenge because, you know, our teachers, as great as they are, are going to be teaching in a mode that most of them are not used to, particularly at the lower elementary level. We also at East have a surplus of space. We can maximize our distancing. We talked a lot about that. Obviously, the more distance we can create and the flexibility we have to move kids to different spaces, larger spaces for breaks and for adjustments, then the better. We also, in this model, have an opportunity to consolidate our staffing and our resources. When we think about all of the nurses, psychologists, and custodians, and other support personnel that we have across the district, spread out currently across our 10 schools, our six elementary schools, having them in one location for our beginning, there are a lot of advantages to that. I mean, there are going to be a lot of social, emotional needs. There are going to be some medical needs. And how do we manage a student who is showing, is symptomatic or who tests positive? And how do we go through those protocols that we've never done before? It also allows us to enhance the collaboration among our teaching staff. So when we're in one location, grades one through three, the staff that are there really have an opportunity to help each other in this new way of teaching. You know, how, how do you strike that balance between maintaining what you have always done, but also recognizing that physical distancing is a significant challenge, particularly at these grade levels? The challenges that we face with this particular option, we are obviously into a situation where more grades are learning remotely. And when we first started out this, the planning process, we really wanted to do the best we could to get at least to grade five in person, not knowing what it was going to look like, and this is back, you know, weeks ago, over a month ago. But that was one of our goals, and this does not do that. And, you know, grade four and five are generally more independent learners, but they are certainly very young still. They certainly need, as all kids do, teacher support and teacher contact. But they also, you know, they're, have them home and going home and being home all day long presents a challenge both for families and for the students, so that this does not address that issue. We also know that in this particular model, we have multiple transitions to buildings throughout the phases. One of the phases that people have pointed out is the first one where we bring the fourth grade back to East Middle School in October. And then a couple of weeks later, we send them back out to their home schools. The reason why we have the step of bringing them back in is because we don't want to be in a position where we don't get them in. And then we're not able to return students to their home schools for whatever reason, particularly in and around the virus. So we think that that is worth building into that plan. But clearly, we would have students going to multiple buildings over a short period of time. You know, that is a challenge. It's a challenge for our staff. It's a challenge for our kids. It's a challenge for our parents. And we know that kids are coming back, really having been out of school for quite some time now. And there's going to be a lot of reorientation, as it is anyway, for them to not be in a space where they are familiar and also to then have to swap out through the phases presents a, certainly a challenge that we would have to pay attention to and deal with. We would also, and it's kind of related, but the, you know, the home schools have their own identity. They, they have a very strong parent connection, family connection. And so one of the benefits of our homeschool structure, and we would lose that to begin the year with. And then really, finally, we certainly know at East Middle School and at High School, we would have to make some adjustments for our younger students from bathrooms and heights and sinks. And we'd also have to move materials and resources and deal with furniture going into East Middle School. And then when we get into step two, we would have to move that back out. We're prepared to do that. We believe we can do that. But it, there's, would need to be some times in between those transitions where we have the ability to get those, that situated. It's not as much of an issue to return to our home schools because most of them will be all set up. Teachers going into East would need to bring their appropriate materials. Option B is a pre-K through 12 hybrid return. We have two, again, two iterations of this option. Option B1, and again, this is all remote, like everything else we've talked about tonight. I mean, I'm sorry, hybrid. So the schedule for Option B1 and B2, this is in common between the two options, the two iterations of B. And I'm not going to read down through this, but you can see, you know, when you get to phase three, Wednesday, September 16th, that is the first instructional day for all of our students. Option B1 specifically would be a pre-K through 12 hybrid start also. Kindergarten students would attend to inadequate, pre-K at the high school, which are their normal home school placements. And this option, we try to kind of mimic a little bit the Option A with the idea that we'd be looking to consolidate to three elementary schools as opposed to the ones we have now. So we really, this kind of hits on that point of the consolidation of resources that we saw earlier. And thinking about the fact that we have, you know, we have a nurse in every building, for example. We have a psychologist in every building. And when we think about bringing two schools together into one, we double that staff. Their thinking is that that would allow us to provide a little bit more intense support. It allows us to adjust and adapt for any changes in staffing due to illness or students due to illness. And it would allow us to really kind of maximize resources with our custodians as well. And when we think about all the custodians that are at the elementary level, we would be consolidating them into three schools. And knowing that we have cleaning protocols that we need to make sure that we hit, that is an advantage certainly of a model like this. So in this model, grades one through three would be attending Flaherty, Liberty, and Morrison. Flaherty would include Flaherty and Ross. Liberty would include Liberty and Highlands. And Morrison would include Hollis and Morrison. As Mr. Lee mentioned earlier, these students would be co-horted together. So potentially what you could see is the Flaherty students would come in, grades one through three, half of them on a, on one day, Ross the next day, and then vice versa over the next two days. So everyone would have two days in person and three days remote, as we have throughout the hybrid model that would allow us to keep our students together by home school and with their teachers by home school. All students in grades four through five would attend South Middle School under this model. Again, the same kind of rationale that would be able to consolidate our resources. This can help potentially, but also there, when we think about transportation, there, there's pros and cons with this. It'll all really depend on how the routes look and how many parents decide to bring their children to school. And then all students in grades six through eight would attend to East Middle School. So East Middle School would be a district-wide middle school for all grades six through eight. And then, of course, the high school would open with nine through 12. So there's no phasing with this, with this plan. We would eventually phase back into bringing our students back to their home schools at the elementary level. That would be predicated on just really paying attention to changes in the conditions and the virus. We would look to metrics that are being provided by both the town of Braintree as well as the state. As we think about our phasing, we also think about not just the pathway of the virus, and we think a lot about how well we manage the virus. So virus management is, and COVID management is a big issue for us. We think that we could, you know, we may be able to, and our goal obviously is to make sure that no matter what's happening outside of school, that we have really good procedures and protocols in place that we hopefully can help to contain any illnesses within the building, but also to, again, provide us with a little bit more sustainability so that we don't get to a situation where we then just have to, to go all remote, which would not be our decision. But, you know, the numbers that are in the building are the numbers we care about the most. So I might have touched on some of these already, but strengths and challenges for Option B. Again, consolidation, increased collaboration, ability to cohort students by home school. That helps to retain the school community and the culture of each of our individual buildings, even though they would be likely or some, in some cases, located in a different building. We can, we can provide air conditioning to improve learning during warmer months. When we're dealing with three schools, it'll give us a little bit more of an opportunity to make sure that we're getting as much air conditioning into our buildings as possible. That was one of the major advantages of East Middle School was the fact that the entire building is cooled. As we know, we are going through right now some very difficult heat. And when we think about a student on a second floor with a mask on for any period of time when there's no really, no air conditioning, that can be fairly intolerable. I think about just the idea of taking, taking my own son and asking him to sit in his room, turn off the air conditioning, have him wear a mask for four, five hours and do work. I think that we can all imagine that that was difficult. I know that many of us working within, you know, public or private offices, we have our office space. We have a mask on when we go in it. We have a mask on when we leave it. But we generally take our mask off when we're in that space by ourselves. Our students and our staff will not be able to do that with regularity that we're able to do that, some of us who are working in office spaces. The challenges are not dissimilar. We have three home schools that have to travel to an unfamiliar site. That will cause certainly some transportation issues as well because then we're putting more students outside that two-mile radius that we talked about. It'll be more difficult for parents who are traveling to that school to get there if they're bringing their children. The staff would be displaced and be in a school other than their own would have not as much access or ready access to the materials that they as much access or ready access to the materials that they have at their, in their, within their own classroom. And it reduces the trial period and ability to proactively address potential issues of hybrid models. So we really want to make sure that we are adapting as quickly as we can to any kind of changes. And also, there's possible addition of transition necessary for younger students if they return to the homeschools. So once we get to a point where we can go back to our homeschools in the, in the transition later on, hopefully, that again, hits that transition issue that we saw in option A. And we know that kids are coming back, they've had a very unscheduled or they're not their normal life. And certainly, in an option where we are reducing transitions for them, that is a good thing. So finally, in option B, this is pretty straightforward. In option B, pre-K through 12 would all be in a hybrid start, just like option B1 and A. The difference would be that all students would attend from the beginning their homeschools. Minn adequate would have the half-day sessions, and again, we may need to move some sessions to some homeschools if we do not have enough room, thinking about just how we're doing the hybrid model again. The elementary schools, Liberty and Highlands, would contain grades one through five as they currently do. We would likely pull the K session that's currently out of Highlands and put that into Minn adequate to provide some additional room for our grade one through five students there. That's less of a concern for us, because clearly, students who come in kindergarten have never experienced a school, they haven't experienced their homeschool yet anyway. And then Flaherty, Hollis, Morrison and Ross will be grades one through four, they might have some half-day K sessions. And as you all know, the grade five from those five, from those four schools will be attending East Middle School. At the middle school level, East would have, again, grades five through eight from Flaherty, Hollis, Morrison and Ross, and South would have grades six through eight from Liberty and Highlands. That is a, what a semi-normal start would look like, or certainly a normal start from the perspective of being in the buildings where students would be assigned. And it obviously reduces the transitions. And then, of course, the Braintree High School would welcome back grades nine through 12. Strengths and challenges for option two, students and the strengths are certainly they remain at their homeschools after a long time of not being in their homeschools. They will go to where they are scheduled to go to, where the district did you go to, they'll be with their friends. And if they are going from the middle school level, example, to the high school, they already have that transition to make. Or from fifth graders, all of our fifth graders from those, the sending schools to East Middle School, that is a significant transition for them and their families, which we've not been able, unfortunately, to do the kind of transition and orientations for those students that we had planned to do. And so we got to work really hard when they, when they come to us this, this fall. The sites are age-appropriate, we don't need to do any kind of retrofitting of bathrooms or sinks. It would be a reduction in travel time for most of our families. We know that we'd have many students who would be able to walk to school because we would be within the neighborhood school district, and we would retain school culture and climate. And then we would not have really any staff or student transitions. The challenges have staff to spread more thinly, with less ability to cover absences. We talked earlier, but when then we talk about the consolidation of three schools, you know, in this model, we go back to one nurse per school, we go back to the custodians who are assigned there, we go back to the one psychologist, for example, who was working in that school as opposed to having more in one site to help each other, to support each other as we welcome our students back. Providing certainly air conditioning to each site would be difficult in time for school opening, we'll do the best we can to achieve that. We, you know, this is obviously a problem that will last, maybe last, we don't know what the weather is, but as I know, I do remember pictures of thermostats from teachers being sent to me on a fairly regular basis. I think it was last year, if it was not last fall, we had a especially hot September and classrooms get, getting very hot. And then, in fact, we had to shift students around within our buildings to take advantage of the classrooms that actually had air conditioning in them. That challenge will not go away, but it, you know, to begin the year with, but obviously, as we get into the fall and we'll get in some cooler months, and it will be less of a problem. In this scenario, we've talked a little bit about the possibility of actual heat days, when we have heat in, as we have right now, we've been experiencing lately, you know, it may be an option that we may have to think about just not having school that day for students who are in those buildings and going full remote, much like what we do with a snow day. Traveling teachers and specialists is a challenge. When we, when we share a teacher or we share a specialist in between buildings, a 1.0 position becomes a 0.8 position, we automatically lose 0.2 to travel time. Again, that was another advantage of consolidating, we would actually pick up more FaceTime, instructional time or support time from our staff who travel, because it would be more than likely we'd be able to dedicate them to one building if we were in three elementary schools consolidated. And then, of course, you know, the transportation is a challenge really in all these, so it's hard to know in some cases whether transportation is going to be easier in one option or harder in one option. Obviously, we now are transporting to 10 schools, but the runs will be shorter, more students be able to walk, parents be able to drop them off. So really, in the end, this is just, it's not really clear how this will go for us. We really, really hope, and we talked about the transportation slide earlier, you know, we've been able to really be, we've been able to provide transportation to students who are within one mile, we've been able to really stay even more than what the state would require. We would really like to get there again, but we have to be able to provide a minimum guarantee of transportation for our students. So with that, that is all that we have, I think that was probably enough. I'd like to thank Ms. Miller and Mr. McDonald and Dr. Platt for taking the time to come tonight and talk through some of these slides, certainly Mr. Lee for the load this evening, he did a great job. So the next step for us is that we have a, the school committee has a meeting, they have a public hearing on Monday that will be at 6:30. It will be scheduled for an hour, and after that, they will adjourn from the public hearing, and then they will go into a regular session at which they will be discussing these options in more detail, they'll have the opportunity to get feedback, I'm sure, from many of you, and they will then vote on the 17th as to what plan will be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We'll be also working on preparing our spaces, certainly, once the vote is taken, we've been doing that anyway, but this will give us more direction as to what we need to focus on. We'll be making faculty and staff assignment decisions after we do some surveying and trying to figure out what's that we know the plan is, and then we'll be finalizing daily schedules for all, for whatever option is adopted. The schedules that you saw tonight is described by Mr. Lee and as well as Mr. McDonald's, those will get finalized so that we can really make sure that we get those out to families and assign our students to both teachers and schedules. We'll be doing before all of this student family surveys, we're going to ask you, are you likely to return in the model that's been selected on Monday night? Are you likely to transport your children? What are your technology needs? Those questions will happen likely by mid to the end of next week. And then over the next several weeks, we'll be finalizing implementation. And I've said a few times that I see August 31st as really kind of the date where we will be in a really good position to know exactly how this is going to go for us, as best we can plan it. We'll have more information on where the data trending, we will be able to make adjustments if we need to, and we are very much looking forward to getting the school year started. It has been a long time since we've seen our kids. So with that, there is a public session, a public comment session at the end of this agenda, which we will go into now. As I described before, Mr. Devon would like to stick to the public comment period as per the policy. We will have 10 minutes total, which he could extend at his discretion. No more than three minutes per person, please. And with that, I will turn it back to Chairman Devon, and if the school committee has any questions prior to going into the public comment. I'm sorry, that was. So you might have questions, or you might be totally worn out.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from anyone from the school committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
By all means, Mr. Kokoras.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for, thanks, everyone, for the work that you put together to bring us these plans tonight. I know that we weren't quite there on Monday, and I appreciate the fact that a little more work was done to get these plans in a place where we could obviously look at them and discuss them. My main questions, and I don't know, Dr. Hackett, if you can go back to the slides on the remote teaching, because I think in any of these three models, the biggest, the biggest thing we're going to see is some kind of remote learning, right? Three days of remote learning, or if you opt to take multiple days of that. And I looked at the proposed schedules, and I have a lot of questions about how much actual live teaching is happening. I, it looked to me like there was a lot more asynchronous teaching, and maybe I just didn't understand those slides correctly. So maybe you can kind of help walk me through what a typical day would be like remotely.
Sure, so I'll just start by, with a general statement, then Mr. Lee can answer the question more specifically. Again, I think he said it at least 17 times, if not 23 times, that this is a sample schedule. We are still a ways away from clearly being able to start finalizing schedules. We don't know, first of all, what plan the school committee will approve, we don't yet know the staffing that we'll have available to us, we don't know how many students are going to choose to go into full remote learning versus back into our hybrid model. And part of the challenge with the hybrid model is even though it is certainly a better option, the kids being home full and not having staff in front of them, is that our staff will have to service both the in-person portion of learning for their classroom as well as the remote day, the, one of the three days for their classroom. So as we've thought this through, you know, there's that responsibility. We do know that we'll have teachers who will be in full remote regardless of the model, because we also will have to staff the BPS Remote Learning School for those students who are choosing to stay out of school and go full remote. So, you know, it really comes down to, for us, a lot of staffing considerations, who is going to be where, where can we provide the coverage? I mean, ideally, we'd be able to line up the, the remote days so that we have the staffing to provide those supports synchronously and asynchronously. But as you know, we have teachers who are in the, in the building with kids for four days out of the five-day week, they still have four half-days of students that they are responsible for who are going to be in front of them. So with that, I will let Mr. Lee speak to any additional detail.
And I'll make the assumption that you're referring to a hybrid model, what's happening on a remote day in a hybrid model, you know, beyond the draft reiteration. A lot of it related to what Dr. Hackett explained, that while that group of remote learners is home, their teachers have students in front of them and are working directly with them. At the same time, we've had conversations with teachers who want to retain a level of control over their classroom, whether it be in person or remotely, and bringing in some other teachers to do the remote component would not necessarily be in line with that type of thinking that individual teachers have, who truly believe and believe are correct, in that they can provide lessons and activities in an asynchronous model for students that are meaningful even at a younger age. With that said, you also heard from Mr. McDonald, who talked about the other opportunities to provide synchronous support, lessons and activities from a building perspective, whether it be special education support, whether it be guidance support, whether it be a principal-run activity, or a host of other things that we can think of, and Mr. McDonald has obviously already started thinking about, that would engage kids on the remote day in a way that is synchronous. Built into the schedule are obviously some synchronous opportunities that would occur on a daily basis, that does not mean that those are the only opportunities, but I'd focus mostly on the fact that I think classroom teachers really, you know, develop that relationship with their kids and want that opportunity to be teaching them throughout the course of the week, you know, both synchronously and asynchronously. And I think they obviously will have the skill set to do so. If you're referring more to the, I'm sorry, if you're referring more to the high school schedule, that, that schedule in and of itself only represents a complete remote schedule, is, does not at all reflect a hybrid model.
Yeah, I can appreciate all that, and I appreciate the answers from, from both of you. I think my challenge is that, I understand these are sample schedules, but I think the biggest issue that parents had is they want actual instruction time. And any one of these plans, they all provide a pretty substantial amount of remote learning. So I'm trying to understand, when I look at the, the sample schedule that's in front of us here, it looks to me like a lot more asynchronous and very little synchronous. And I think that's what I'm trying to understand. I want to be able to understand that we vote on a plan that in the, in the days that students aren't in school, that they're getting actual learning, not asynchronous learning.
So again, Mr. Kokoras, just to point out what Mr. Lee's already said, that the high school, middle school sample schedule that you're looking at right now is the assumption of a full remote learning schedule. So this is, for example, if we are in option A, and grades four through 12 are fully remote and not in hybrid, this is what the schedule could look like for middle school and high school students. This does not represent what a schedule could look like or would look like necessarily for students at the high school and middle school levels who would be in a hybrid model. We do have, we certainly, you are not the only one who has the challenge of, of hearing and understanding the concerns of parents and even of our staff and teachers. And we want to have our students in, in our classrooms, we want to be as synchronous as possible, but, you know, to the extent that we have to also staff both synchronous and asynchronous with the same staff who are in school in a hybrid, four days a week, half-day, we are going to have to see where the staffing falls, because until we know that for sure, that will help us determine what the out-of-school remote days would look like. And we will certainly provide synchronous learning during those remote days, but, you know, the extent that we can provide more of it will really depend on the number of students that end up in remote and how we staff that.
And if your question really related to this full remote schedule, and maybe I didn't do a good enough job explaining it, each one of those periods would involve a synchronous component. So that is, you know, we discussed earlier, attendance would be taken for each one of those courses, the class would begin with a synchronous instruction as I described. We're still talking more about minimum and maximum expectations in terms of how much time would be synchronous. Again, we don't want too much time with a teacher on a Google Meet talking to children, but we definitely want some time in a Google Meet with teachers talking to students in this full remote model. So in this particular schedule that is currently on the screen, every one of those periods would involve synchronous instruction.
Yep, and I appreciate that, and I understand that it's still a work in progress, but I think that's a big question that certainly I have, and I've heard from a lot of parents. And maybe kind of a follow-up question, and maybe Rebecca's a better person to answer this. In, in the case, and I think there was an example about 19 students in a particular grade, and we would break them up 10 and nine, right? So the nine that are in that same class, is there not a way through technology for that teacher to be teaching 19 students at the same time? So, and again, I don't know the answer to that, but that would seem to be the more logical option, right?
Right, so that actually, that question was answered, you can answer it if you like, but.
Right, and, you know, beyond privacy concerns that we would have about trying to stream a classroom full of kids to households in Braintree, more importantly, we want that teacher who's in the classroom with kids to be able to directly work with those students in the room. You know, in the, as Mr. McDonald explained, a teacher working directly with nine students in a room, person to person, can be highly effective in that regard. And each one of the students in that class, whether they were part of the nine or part of the 10 that came in the next day, would benefit from that level of intervention by the teacher. So, you know, tracking that teacher to run back and forth from a computer to students, trying to do both, might not be the most effective way to provide the instruction.
Yeah, and that's, and maybe that's why I'm asking if Rebecca can kind of weigh in. I'm not asking that question, I'm saying that if the students that are remote that day are on the computer, they're getting the same instruction that the nine kids that are in class are getting. So, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but I think no matter what model we're talking about, there's a pretty big remote component, and that remote component's got to be substantive if we're going to, you know, two days in school and three days remote in a hybrid program, those three days that aren't in school have to be substantive enough that, you know, the two days that are in school are going to supplement that. So I'll kind of leave my comments there.
Sure, I mean, I think it's too early to really nail that down, as we said, you know, again, it's going to come down to some staffing questions and how many kids are going to go remote and how well we can do that. You know, we certainly understand the concern, but, you know, we are, and we will, we are addressing it. There are privacy issues, as Mr. Lee stated, of streaming live out of a classroom, there are also some bandwidth issues that we'd be concerned about. issues. It would be concerned about technology issues. It would be concerned about. So that is, that's not our starting point. It's unlikely that it will be that we'd be streaming from a classroom. But we will continue, obviously, to work on it. It's a big, major component for us, and there's still a lot of work to be done. So, thank you.
And to clarify.
Mr. Lee, could you please finish? Mr. Mayor, be right with you.
I'm sorry, I just gotta state, just to clarify, that the students working at home are not working on the exact same lesson that the kids in school are working on. So in essence, there are two separate lessons, one for the kids who are in class that day, one for the group of students who are at home. And then when they shift roles, they do the opposite. Just, just informationally, I just wanted to make that clear.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Corus. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I'd like to clarify. First of all, I will say that the B2 option is the option that I support and will support. I just think that in order for us to facilitate the progression of bringing students back to normalcy at some point, and hopefully bringing them back to full-time every day of the week, I think that it's, it's going to be a lot easier if they're in their home schools to progress and add a day or add two days or whatever happens down the line if things stay stable. In addition to that, I want some clarification. I don't need it now. But as to if we're doing half-days, a normal day for staff would be at least a couple of hours after the dismissal time. And I just want clarification as to whether we will have teachers in the classroom available for students at all the schools for extra help that they might need, or any appointments they might have to make to get additional assistance, what the plans are at that particular point in the day for staff to do, as far as will they be helping kids that are remote that day with questions they might have. So I'd like an answer on that, not tonight, but on Monday. And, and finally, I just want to say that today we had zero new cases, which is another positive as we move forward. But I, I would, I would stress that in option B2, we already have all the students in place, so that as we move forward, our ultimate goal is to have all students in school learning. And I understand that this is a very conservative approach, the hybrid approach. But it also gives us the opportunity, if we are doing this right, to move forward and increase the in-time, in-school time for students. And I will say, as far as from the health perspective, having more schools utilized gives us the opportunity to spread the students out. And if we do have an infection, it minimizes the number of students impacted and personnel. So the more we congregate people in, in smaller settings or, or in buildings, that less buildings, the more opportunity we have for larger numbers of contact. So by using all of our buildings, we spread out the chances of the virus causing, you know, havoc within any particular building, with any, within any particular classroom. So the last thing is, as far as air conditioning, I, I think that, you know, we need to look at whether, under the COVID funding, whether that's something that we could utilize to try to purchase or try to create the ability for us to get more air conditioners, if, if we do have an issue with, with a very warm fall. But I'm very excited about Plan B2. And I think that it will give children the opportunity to go to their home schools and to be in a place they're comfortable with, and for the, the teachers to have all the resources they normally have in their own classroom, and for us to have some level of normalcy in such a crazy time. So I, I just hope that when we get to Monday night, some of those questions could be answered. And if I think of anything else, I'll reach out to you, Dr. Hackett. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other comments or questions from anyone from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Hi. Thank you very much. I, I want to thank everyone, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Lee, all the teachers, all the members of the steering committee, everybody that's put a lot of thought and effort into the options. I know it's a very complex decision on many, many levels. And I appreciate all the hard, hard work that went in there. I'm not a teacher. I'm not an educator. I, I can't even imagine how, how we can try to create any kind of normal in any of these situations. But I do, you know, want to, I want to say that we do have a lot of challenges ahead. And I think that we want to make sure that, that the teachers and the students all have safety protocols in place, and that we are all doing the best that we can in the middle of a global pandemic. I know everybody wants to have an answer. Everybody wants to go back to being normal. And, you know, going back in person will be the farthest thing from normal. So we need to manage expectations, and we need to make sure that we're doing it in a safe and feasible way. And with that, I do want to say that the map that I saw that Governor Baker put out, I, I do think it's a little interesting that for two months, D E S I guidelines, as well as the CDC guidelines, all really pushed everything back to the districts. And then, what, a couple of days before we're supposed to file these plans, Governor Baker decides that, you know, he's going to give his expectations based on, you know, a map. And we all know that even if Braintree is green right now, we border other towns that are yellow. We also know that not all our teachers live in Braintree. Other teachers are coming from other towns and other cities that may not be green or white. And we need to take that into consideration. We also have kids that come from Metco and from the Boston area, and they too may not be in white or green maps. So I think we need to be cautious about putting plans based on one metrics. And we need to look at many other issues. And I, I appreciate that. I look forward to getting more information and discussing this on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lamair. Any other comments or questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Dolan.
I just want to say thanks to everyone who contributed to this presentation. And I can see that a lot of the feedback from the reopening committee meeting this week was incorporated, so that's appreciated as well. The level of detail here is great. I don't see how anyone can say that they don't understand the thought process and the options. So I'm really hoping that if parents aren't listening to this right now, that they take the time to watch the recording of this, to really have the full understanding of all the great work that's put into this. So that's appreciated. I just wanted to make one point of clarification, or I guess try to distill something down, which is the amount of asynchronous instruction on the hybrid remote days. I think, put very simply, the teacher can't be in two places at once. So if the teacher has an assigned third-grade class of 19 students, and she's teaching half of them in school on one day, there's naturally going to be a little more asynchronous instruction on that second day, because she has to split her time. I do really like the idea of bringing in specialists and, you know, other staff members to help supplement that day. But I think it's important for parents to understand that it's not going to be a full synchronous day with a classroom teacher on those remote days, just as sort of a, a decision factor, or, you know, an opinion factor when you're thinking about what you want for your child. I think the remote schedule obviously presents its challenges. We want our kids back in buildings. We want, as Kelly said, that sense of normalcy that we're probably not going to get. But again, I think it's important for parents to understand that that remote schedule offers a lot more synchronous instruction, because the teacher is remote all the time. So again, I just want parents to understand those two different factors, especially where I think it's been stated pretty clearly that we can't have the teacher livestream from the, the number of kids that they're in front of to the kids who are at home, because, you know, they're on those opposite schedules and for sort of the privacy and classroom management factors. So again, my only point is to try to distill that down for parents, so that they understand the pros and cons of both of those schedules. So thanks again for all the work, and I'm looking forward to moving this forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Okay, that's everyone on the school committee. I have a few comments. First of all, I, I appreciate the work that went into this from many, many different people. I appreciate the comments from the members of the school committee. Obviously, we've got a few choices here. I do think that some of the choices that we're seeing exceed what we're hearing from other districts, surrounding districts. So I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to, shall we say, break some ground, that with, with that being said, with minimal, shall we say, guidance from our federal government or our state government or anyone else, this is truly a Braintree plan made up from people of Braintree. It's greatly appreciated. I would suggest that anyone that has any complex questions, please email them to our central office, so that we can put light questions together and come up with a frequently asked question and answer section, and get that up Monday, so that when we do have our public hearing this coming Monday, that we, we almost break new ground with some of the answers that are out there, so we can get perhaps to the second level of questioning that will help us mold these plans to the best that will help our students and our staff and our parents. I'm sorry, and, and our staff and the parents, obviously. I like the fact that I heard more in-depth as to what we were going to do with, for helping children with IEPs. Obviously, I could use a little bit more instruction when it comes to IEPs. I did apologize for my faux pas there. At any rate, the distance learning, we know that that's going to, shall I say, come into more focus as we go forward. So I look forward to that, shall we, shall we say, becoming even more robust, and it being able to be something that we can truly measure. So with that, we are on to.
Mr. Chair, please.
Yes.
For the second time.
Please.
Thank you. Through the chair. And, and I appreciate the comments of the previous speaker, but I believe that we need some better clarification before we vote on Monday of each of the plans and what exactly the remote learning piece will look like. I understand the challenges. I don't think they're, I don't think they're insurmountable, but I think that there are definitely things that we need to understand before we can vote on any plan. So I, I know parents, and I'm sure when we go into open, open session here with the parents, that we're going to hear questions. And I want us to make sure we explore every avenue, so that we don't have the same challenges we had in the spring. It's not two days of learning and three days of sort of learning. It's got to be five days of learning. And, you know, I, I don't think I'm, and I apologize, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee, I listened to the presentation, and I don't think I'm hearing concretely what each one of these options do on the remote learning side. And I understand the challenges of staffing and all that, but I think those are things that by this point, we should have had on the table, and we should have understood. So, thank you.
I respectfully disagree, Mr. Corus, but I appreciate the questions. And we will, we'll have more information for you to the best of our ability on Monday. It's been pretty well thought out, to the extent that we can know what we're dealing with. But again, I appreciate the questions.
I appreciate that.
From Monday. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, gentlemen. At this time, we will enter into our public comment. Do you have the slides?
I do.
That will help keep us within, what are the rules? Please be respectful of any and all people's opinions, whether they be yours or not. We give you basically about three minutes. It's my discretion to go even more. I would like to think we're not going to get many questions this evening, because I, I believe the last segment we had, there were more people that came up with, they had questions that were more or less directed towards their own personal situation. If you have a, a, a situation that, you know, that's case-specific to your family, please email that in, so that we can get it to the proper person, so we can get you those questions, so that that is case-specific to what you need. So with that being said, who is our first person? We have, some of these names aren't included entirely. So Andrew. Andrew, welcome. You are unmuted? Nope, you're not. Yep.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Andrew.
Oh, hi, guys. How are you and ladies?
How are you?
I'll, I'll try to be brief, but so the, the, there's a recent study at the University of Florida that showed the virus can travel through aerosols, and that, that essentially means just breathing at a distance of seven to 16 feet while indoors. And we all know masks tend to travel downwards. The nose gets exposed. That leads to many dangerous, potentially dangerous situations per classroom, per day. So you acknowledged during the last call that you had some concerns about the air quality in the schools, and I was happy to hear you say that. And you said on this call, you'd be hiring contractors to survey the air quality of the schools. And, and I heard the mayor's concerned about a lack of air conditioning because of hot weather. But, but what is the, what is the decision-making that goes into upgrading these, the, the circulation to try to address this? What's the budget and timeline for appropriately retrofitting the schools to account for the fact that they may not be fit for use based on what we now know? Like, when, when do those decisions get made? So I think this is the most urgent and important issue to address, much more so than, than even the sanitation of surfaces. And, and the last point I'll make, I, I would really like some consideration on that. Last point I'll make is, I understand the emotional toll that this is taking on our kids. And I appreciate that your recommendations seem to be in response to that. But I don't think what you're, I, I think maybe what you're not taking into consideration here is that if families choose the all-remote option, kids will feel left out from the activity of their peers, and it's going to create the, the emotional trauma that you're trying to address by sending kids back to school. And so I urge you to begin the school year completely remote and present a data-driven approach to reopening when it's safe to do so. I think you're, you're striving for normalcy, but I think you're sacrificing safety here. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Amy J.S. Amy J.S. Welcome.
I'm just second here.
Okay.
It's Amy here. I am shocked that everyone has done, because I know this process kind of bites. It really is not a great process to be thinking about, how do we look forward in the future for our children, for our staff, for everything. And we're in the midst of a pandemic. And I look at that, and I think, God, where are we going? So I've, I've listened to everything. I'm living this. I have never worked so hard during the summer, not working, and thinking about everything that's gone on. And as I listen to the presentations and the evolving presentations, I've been very disappointed in many ways, in terms of the way it's been presented to us. But the thing is, you know, it, it's not an easy, like, here you put it out, and it's going to work this way. And we know that. We know that. Any intelligent person should know that. But I have to express my opposition to the whole idea of going up to East Middle School for all the staff. I just don't see I just don't see how logistically that's going to work. I don't understand it in any way, shape and form. And, you know, I think there's many people, I haven't spoken to one single person that understands that. And so I am definitely opposed to that. But honestly, until we have a real clear perspective in terms of, you know, where we're going with this, I really don't think we should be on site whatsoever. And I'll tell you, right now, I want to be with the children. I want to be working and I have done it. And I will tell you also that I've had the opportunity to work with kids and I've seen what's gone on behind the doors. And I'm not happy and I just don't think that it's going to work. I don't understand how, at this hour, that anyone thinks that we're going to be safe with protocols.
Yes.
So I'm just going to tell you that.
Yes. Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thanks, Tom.
I hope you have a good evening.
Thanks, Tom.
You're most welcome. Last name Cruz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, good evening.
All right, great, this is Louise Cruz, a parent of a Highland student. Number of stuff here, so I'm going to try to blaze through it as fast as I can. First of all, for those parents choosing the remote complete option, the slide said that they would be taught supported by other staff members. How exactly are we defining other? Are these licensed teachers, licensed substitutes, lunch lady Doris, groundskeeper Willie? It would be nice to have some clarity on what that means. Under the health slide, it was mentioned that the windows will be left open. That's obviously a very good practice, given what we know about the virus so far. But what does this mean during the winter? If we are concerned about airflow and air quality and whatnot, that we would be leaving the windows open when we can? How are we addressing this health concern during the winter time? Option A listed explicitly that it was maintaining a six-foot distance between people. Option B did not have that listed at all. But it would be nice to get some clarity there as if options B1 and 2 are also maintaining that six-foot distance or if there are other space considerations. For the hybrid models where it's two-on-three off, what does the schedule for that look like? Is that a rotation where one week your students are going two days, the next week they're, you know, two days like back-to-back, two days, different two days the next week? How is that exactly, is that going to work in terms of scheduling for parents? And what also stood out to me is on option A, why exactly is fourth grade starting two weeks at East Middle School rather than just going directly to their homeschool? What exactly is that all about? Why, what is preventing all those fourth grade students just from starting directly at their homeschools prior to those two weeks before going back or just waiting those additional two weeks to go back to their homeschools? And with that, I will give you back the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Valene Duffy. Duffy, good evening. Good evening, Ms. Duffy. Hold on, you're good. Technology. All right. We're not going to be able to hear from Ms. Duffy. Well, why don't we move to someone else and we can try and come back? Ms. Yu Haas. Yes. Ms. Yu Haas, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on Merica Khoras's statement from the beginning of the meeting. With all due respect, I think it's really irresponsible to say that there is no reason to not have all students participating in hybrid learning. I, as much as anyone, would like to see all students return to school. I have five boys that should be attending Braintree Public Schools this year and I would love to send them. However, the mayor isn't really providing any solutions to the challenges that we face. We have challenges in facilities, public health, staffing, financing and curriculum needs. And I think it's really naive to kind of pretend that we're going to replicate traditional learning in any way and to pretend that that's an option is very misleading by the mayor, I feel. I think the school department has worked diligently and creatively to develop solutions and the mayor is kind of actively ignoring the advice of those with greater knowledge and expertise in the actual education of our students. This is such an ever-changing situation and I really think our focus should be on consistency in the education of our students. And I hate to say it, even if that consistency might mean remote learning for a while, I think that we need to have the brave face to say that that might be our best solution. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope you have a good evening and thank you for your help on the opening committee too. Let's try Ms. Duffy again here. Ms. Duffy. Just doesn't want to pick up. Sometimes it's so rough. Sometimes it's the version of Zoom the trick change. Okay. So, Dawn Whitney. Ms. Whitney.
Hello.
Hey. Hello.
Hi, so I have just a few points that I wanted to mention. I think that others have covered some of this already. One of them comes back to the air quality. So I'm really confused based on conversations that I've heard in some of the meetings before. I'm under the impression that the reason that we weren't initially using all of the school buildings was based on issues with air quality, buildings being old, outdated HVAC systems. And so as a parent, I really need to hear in very clear terms why that conversation has changed? Why do we think that the buildings are now safe to have students in all of the buildings? That is going to really weigh into our decision to send our children to school or not. I would love to be back at our homeschool Ross. I would love for my kids to walk to school. But I, up to this, tonight, I thought that that was not a safe option to send the kids back to Ross School and maybe others. I don't know about the other elementary schools. And so that's my first point. The second one that I really think that needs to be also, I need to hear really clearly so that we can make a solid decision is about the all-remote option for those K to three students. I've heard from families in neighboring communities that if the family selects the all-remote option, that those students will be required to take a state-run curriculum. And what that means, as far as I've heard from a few different families in different communities, is that those students will not be serviced by the teachers and staff of that school and more, that if the student falls behind at that school, that community is not going to spend any time trying to catch that student up. So I would like to know if in Braintree, for those K to three families that are selecting the remote option, will those students be serviced by Braintree Public School teachers and staff? And my third piece is, I wear a K and a three family. So this asynchronous hybrid model, all of those asynchronous pieces that you had on the calendar, I think that we could manage that, especially since my daughter and my son won't sit in front of the computer for any length of time for a live session. I can keep them, their attention there, maybe 15 minutes. But what would be really helpful is that since the teachers can't be available live, that another staff or another teacher is available in a class, like a remote classroom to clarify those concepts or those questions that come up because parents may not be able to support those kids and we may not understand how to clarify those concepts. So we need, even if the teacher can't be that support person, we need support.
Okay.
That's it for now.
Okay. Mr. Lee, please.
I'm good.
Are you good? Okay. Next. Joan Marie Cruz. Ms. Cruz.
Hello. Good evening.
You are unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll be as brief as I can. I just want to, I know it's not a Q and A, so I'll be just comments, but I just wanted to say thank you to George Khoras because your questions were exactly what I had and I think other parents will have. I respectfully disagree with Dr. Hackett. I don't think it's very clear about what the hybrid day versus remote day and having the synchronous sessions. Because to be honest, it's not very clear to me of that, I guess you call it the all-remote school or whatever, it's still not clear to me whether there's going to be synchronous sessions more often there than if my child was on a hybrid model and having a remote day with their own teacher class. Secondly, I really don't feel this has been addressed and you can feel free at some point to correct me if I'm wrong, but you've been talking about quarantining a class and it's not clear to me what will happen if a class is quarantined. Will they go to remote learning while they're out of school? Will they be with the, what will they do? Will the whole class go remote learning for a given period of time? It just, it just really isn't clear. And then my last comment is just, I would like it, hopefully at some point to be clear of what staff are coming back. It's very discomforting to know, I have no clue whether, you know, my child is in fourth grade. I don't know whether any of the fourth grade teachers at her school would be coming back to do the hybrid or whether they'd be put with the remote, full remote school. It's not been very clear and I know that you might not have that answer at this point, but I'm hoping there'll be transparency for the parents. And I'll concede the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you very much, I hope you have a good evening, appreciate your time. Rex Landreth. Okay, Mr. Landreth. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, thank you very much. Rex Landreth, I've got an incoming third, a second grader at Liberty and I'm on Alita Road. I truly appreciate in this presentation that you were able to expand upon the special education aspect of going forward. However, I do feel like it was lacking in addressing students with IEPs, especially in the sense of if a family chose to go the full remote learning. So I would really appreciate in the Q and A session on Monday to have, be prepared to address what type of services and how does the school district plan on servicing students on IEPs? If the family chooses to go full remote and also even if they choose to go on the hybrid option, if they're only going to be in school for roughly three hours of instructions twice a week, how does the district plan on servicing students that have instructional needs three to five times a week? If they're only going to be in school for two days at a time? I, just from our own personal preference, we're kind of leaning the full remote learning option. So I mean, personally, that's where my interest lies. But I imagine that many other families in our district are probably wondering the exact same thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, greatly appreciate it. Henry. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, Henry, welcome. We can hear you. We, you could.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, good evening.
Thanks for having me. So my name is Henry, I'm currently a senior at UMass Amherst and I'm a graduate of Bridge High School.
Yes.
And I just want to emphasize out there that this presentation was great. And one suggestion I have for Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee is maybe to talk more about the model of hybrid and what student experience is outside of classroom because a lot of parents are confused on what remote learning actually is and there's different ways academia kind of does the remote learning, whether that's through, you know, learn session, sinkers knee and then asynchronously you do your homework and stuff like that or what's called reverse classroom models, stuff like that. So Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee, if you can talk more about that maybe in later session, that might help clarify a lot of the parents' concerns. Additionally, I just want to say, one of the plans was to have all K to 12 come back in a hybrid model on the first day of school. And my concern with that is Braintree was already populated, really dense back in 2017. So I have no idea how people can go back to school on the first day and be safe. There are schools already opening and they got shut down real soon. So that's my main concern and, you know, I would hope that Braintree would do a better job to the seniors, the fourth grade going up to fifth grade the following year or the eighth grade moving up to high school. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for your time, greatly appreciate it.
Stephanie McManus.
Ms. McManus, good evening.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight as a mother of a kindergartner. If I had to vote for one of the three plans presented tonight, I would vote for the B1, partly because it offers the combining staff and resources, which seems like a good thing. And also because it allows for the contracted daycare, which I would love to hear more about, particularly maybe what building, because I kind of missed that part. But really, I would love like a 1B2 option where everyone's going to those schools. But that maybe it's being phased in because that seems particularly important in solving issues like busing and stuff. It's probably just not great if you're trying to do it all on the first day. So maybe some kind of phased approach, but going back to the schools listed on that one. Partly because I just can't imagine how they could possibly make the high school as inviting and age-appropriate as inadequate is for kindergartners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Good evening.
I'm not going to try to pronounce your name because I would hack it up so badly. Please tell us what your name is so we can get the correct pronunciation.
Tree Wen.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. There were, you have brought up a couple of time that, you know, you're not going to stream the teaching live because of privacy issue. This is a public school, so what privacy issue would we have? And additionally, yeah, I mean, just like what we're doing now, right? With this meeting right now, I mean, I don't understand that if we are to teach the exact same way as we are having this meeting, what the issue would be? Because if, it's not like the teacher is going to be sitting at the desk doing Google meeting all day so that she can't focus on the rest of class. It would be addressing the entire class as if they're in person. So I just want those to be addressed because right now it doesn't sound like it's going to be fair. Me personally, I would want to keep my son at home because I don't feel safe that for him to go back into school, even though Braintree is fairly safe right now. Like Ms. Dolan had mentioned earlier, right? We have teachers, students- We have teachers, students from all around Massachusetts, not just here in Braintree. So for me to, to allow my, my son to go to school, which would mean exposing him to the danger, and I would rather like keep him at home and have homeschooling than have, you know, to expose him to that kind of, uh, risk. That's my.
That is your option, yes. That, that, that is your option if you so choose. Um, uh, full-remote is always a person's option, always has been.
Yeah, but I, I don't feel that i- it's fair, right? I mean, if, if we choose, uh, remote learning, right? But you're pretty much isolating him, right, isolating us by not streaming the, the, the lesson, the, the class, uh, from school. I mean, you're, from what we had this spring, it was horrible. It seems to me that Braintree is very far behind. The reason why we moved to Braintree, uh, a few years ago is because, uh, we heard that Braintree have a great school system. But from what happened this spring, it sounds like Braintree was far behind from, from the Boston School System, the Canton School System, several school system that I know people that had kids, uh, at. And it just seems like if we're gonna continue that way by, you know, if we choose remote learning, that, you know, my son is not gonna be able to, uh, see what's going on in a class, that it's gonna be the exact same situation, which would be horrible. If that's the case, I would rather withdraw my son from the Braintree School System and send him somewhere else.
I, I hear you. I believe we're going to clarify that this coming Monday, what, what that actual, that component's going to be in far more detail, and I believe that'll answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time and your patience.
Um, Brendan Lee. Mr. Lee.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mr. Devon.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry if it gets loud.
No worries at all.
If it's too loud. I just have one question, 'cause, you know, I've had a lot of, um, you know, I've been following everything. Are all these options, are they subject to collective bargaining agreements with their teachers' union?
The implementation is up to the school committee, then, um, the bargaining would happen either prior to, before, or after. Um, they're not necessarily subject to, but there's a, there could be an impact that it will have.
Okay, so we'll have more concrete plans hopefully Monday or after those sessions take place with what's going on.
It's not to, not to engage in discussion, but once the school committee develops, uh, votes on a plan, then that's the plan that has to get bargained.
Are the, are the Braintree teachers, uh, are they advocating to go back? There's a couple of the people that called earlier, uh, seem to be teachers who don't, who wanna stay remote. So I'd just like to know what the, uh, Braintree teachers are presenting, if they're presenting anything.
That's something that's gonna take place i- i- in a future time, uh, uh, as far as us sitting down and speaking with them. And that's, we, we can't, we, I can't openly negotiate right now. Um, it's not something.
Yeah, I'm not asking for, uh, details, but I'm saying, are they advocating to go back?
We can't really speak for them. Can't speak to them.
All right, I, I, I appreciate your time. I know you're putting a lot of work in, and I.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Merica Corus that we need the kids back. And with, uh, Bacon making that statement and putting out that map today, I think it's, uh, a step forward. Thank you, and, uh, good luck with your planning.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to cut off. Michelle Dinen.
Michelle, good evening.
Hi, this is Michelle Dinen. Uh, I'm a parent of an incoming sixth grader at South Middle. Um, first of all, I just wanna thank all of you for the in, in incredible amount of time that you've put into planning all of these logistics. I've, I've been having conversations with my husband and, um, just, we're just in awe of all of the logistics that you're all planning, so we appreciate that on our kids' behalf. Um, my question is piggybacking on the special ed question that was asked earlier. Um, the specific question that I have is about the slide, which I know there were a lot of slides, but it spoke to the students that would get four half-day in-person learning, um, sessions versus two half-day in-person learning sessions. It seemed like those kids were only at the elementary school level, and I was just hoping before Monday or by Monday, we could get more information as to whether or not there are middle school and high school students that will be eligible for the four half-days of in-person instruction.
Slides will be up tomorrow so that you can look, um, look at them and, and, and focus on what your needs are. They'll be able, you'll be able to focus on what you need. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe we're gonna go till about nine thirty. This is gonna be our last person, because we do have some other things. We have to go into executive session. I mean, the slides are up, um, email questions, uh, who is our last person?
Uh, last name Habib, please. Good evening.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Rajah, and, uh, I have my daughter. She's gonna be, um, going to, uh, Liberty, and she's a second grader. Uh, first, I would like to just thank everybody for the work and the time that you put in. I know it's not an easy, uh, task, and we, everybody's confused, everybody, we have a lot of uncertainty, so it doesn't help at all. But, um, I would like to have more details about the full-remote learning. Um, listening to, uh, Mrs. Whitney, that, that, um, asked a question before, I, she was talking about the running, like, you know, having a totally different curriculum, which is the, 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 the state one, and that the full-remote option won't be supported by, uh, you know, Braintree teachers. So, um, I don't wanna really feel that I am being penalized if I go for the full-remote, uh, learning. And, uh, if this option is gonna still be, um, you know, taken care of by the, the, the Braintree School System and by the teachers, uh, how, how would it work? And how can we, like, when our kids, they're gonna go back to school, how are we planning on, like, getting them up to speed, uh, if their learning program is different?
Okay, um, you're asking questions that are almost pertinent to a previous speaker. Um, I believe more details are gonna be provided on the distance learning this coming Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your patience, and to those that didn't get called on this evening, uh, we'll be working to get question and answer on our website. And public, uh, uh, public comment will be, uh, a public meeting will be this coming Monday at 3:30. Um, with that, I have two things we have to do. First of all, we'll be adjourning, and we'll be, uh, there is a consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30, Section 21A3, to discuss a strategy and negotiation of a memorandum of, uh, agreement, an open meeting to have a direct effect, uh, in having it happen in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. So two, uh, two things we're going to, um, I will take a motion from, someone from the school committee to enter into executive session, and we'll get a second, and then we'll.
So moved.
I, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Roll call, vote. Merica Corus.
Aye.
Ms. Saris is not here. Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
Aye.
Mrs. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe. And the, and the, uh, chair votes aye. Uh, that motion passed, we'll be entering executive session. I will now ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saris is not here. Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
Aye.
Mrs. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe. And the chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.